Wonderful. How about you?
Good.
I love your tone. This is a consultant, right? It's nine o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of box silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have rule call, please.
Commissioner Ian Sorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bunnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Stotis-Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rottenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Launer.
Present.
Thank you. That brings us to Communications, Proclamations, and Presentations. We have the administrators up here. Turn that down so we can see a little better. I'm glad everyone made it safely today. It's a little slippery out there. It's that time of the year. Commissioner Launer, you probably recognize this farm, don't you?
I do, but I want to say it's Missouri because, yeah, it's Garvin.
Garvin, very good.
Yeah.
Garvin farm, yeah.
Ask close, they're related.
Nice photo for this time of the year to start off the meeting. I've got a few updates on veteran services, so at this point I'd like to have Chris come up here. I think most of you know Chris Daly.
Yeah, I'm Chris Daly. I'm with the County Veterans Parish Office. And Chet asked me to come in to talk about briefly about the magazine that our office is working with Gather on. It's a free magazine to the community about, it's all about veterans. It's about veterans in the community and primarily it's about veteran updates, like, and benefits. It's all funded by advertisers and it goes throughout northern Michigan, so it's Grand Traverse, Leona, and other surrounding counties.
Nice job.
And there's some there if anybody's interested.
Thank you.
May, can I ask a question?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Recently had a veteran struggling with PTSD, et cetera, and they're on the, I'm not sure exactly what it would be called, but the tax deferment.
Okay.
And they had to file that every year, and it's very difficult for him to, like, remember to get that in.
Okay.
January 1 or whatever. And, like, is there any possible way we can link him with someone that can make sure he gets paperwork in timely?
That's challenging because how it is, the VA releases the annual statement, you know, of benefits, which is at the end of the year, which I believe is about the same time that they start asking for those.
Yes.
The paperwork. So it's a very short window there, and we can't generate them in our office. They actually have to come from the VA.
So we'll look for another process to help him out specifically.
I think maybe, depending on his age, maybe, like, senior services, because I work close to senior services, and they have social workers that, so that might be something I'll get to talk to them.
It's possible. All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we have one more veterans update, but I'll wait for a minute here because the person's not here in the room that I want to honor, so we'll go forward and I'll come back to this. We had a great senior services luncheon at the Bluebird, and I just saw April walk in. April, want to just give us a quick update?
We had a great celebration. We had about 120 seniors that joined us, and it was always a wonderful time. The Bluebird offers a wonderful meal, and everybody loves to do stuff, so it was a good time. We had sing-along. Jerry led us into the sing-along.
And just to show you how we try to meet every need here, if you look at this picture here, you'll see the sheriff with Mr. Polka. Mr. Polka had to have hot chocolate, and the sheriff went in and got him a cup of hot chocolate, so. Just another part of our duty, right, Sheriff? So, made him happy by getting hot chocolate. All right, let's go back to veterans, and we have a surprise. Matt, come up here, stand up. Matt doesn't know anything about this.
I don't.
And I'd like to introduce Chris Keenan here, and Chris will introduce herself, and tell us why she's here.
Hi, my name is Christine Keenan, and I'm a volunteer with ESGR. I'm here today from ESGR, and that's the employer support of the Guard and Reserve to tell you about the role of this program.
Let the commissioners can see you as well.
Oh.
There you go.
How's that? Stand over here. Ah, let me get back here. I am here today from ESGR to tell you about the role of this program through the Department of Defense and to recognize an individual that has gone above and beyond the requirements of the law. ESGR seeks to foster a culture in which all employers support and value the employment and voluntary service of members of the National Guard and Reserve in the United States. We, as volunteers, do this by advocating mutually beneficial initiatives, recognizing outstanding employer support, increasing awareness of applicable laws and policies, resolving potential conflicts between employers and their service members, and acting as the employer's principal advocate when, with the Department of Defense. We accomplish this by educating service members and their civilian employers about the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, or U.S.A.R.A., mediation as trained volunteer armssmen concerning the U.S.A.R.A. law when needed, advocating on behalf of employers, service members, and their families as a communication link between them and the Department of Defense, and the reason of my visit today, recognizing employers that support employees serving in the National Guard and Reserve by presenting Department of Defense awards to those employers nominated by their Guard or Reserve employees. Sergeant Julie Launer, United States Army Reserve, wrote this nomination. My supervisor has been incredibly patient with the requirements of the Army. I was pulled from my organic unit in Michigan to go to the 103rd in Iowa, and this required more travel, more monthly drill time, and then time away for a deployment. It caused a shortage at work in the middle of a hiring process, but at no time did my supervisor give me a hard time for having to be gone, even though it created a temporary hardship for my coworkers. He understands and appreciates the sacrifice I have made. I'm sorry, my brother was National Guard. These awards choke me up now, though. And knows I can't wait to get back to dispatching, and I can't imagine that. Dispatching is stressful. This was dated October 22, 2019. It is my pleasure to forward on this honor with the Patriotic Employer Award. Matt, thank you for your service to our veterans. Display and go with it. Now, if I can impose on you just one minute more, I've promised, I've been in touch with Julie, and I promised her that I would send a picture. So, if you don't mind, Chet?
You got the good one there?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Did you get it?
I got it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, it seems that Julie always has some kind of change to her drill schedule, and it's, uh, it's, it's pretty consistent. Whenever she gives me a piece of paper, I know there's another one coming. But, yeah, I know that she was deployed, and it's kind of an emotional going-away party for her. She, uh, something that she does want to do, but she is very enthusiastic to get back, so, I mean, it's great to have an employee like that, so, thank you very much.
Couple more months.
Well, thank you.
We can't wait.
The law dictates an employer's response, but some employers can make it difficult for the employee and uncomfortable. So employers that go above and beyond are very much appreciated. And I also brought a certificate for the county with Chet's name on it as administrator, so you can all demonstrate to the world that you support veterans.
Well, Matthew, nothing about this.
I didn't. I was a little afraid. You make sure you're here at nine o'clock.
Yeah, I didn't give them an option. I totally did. And Christine, thank you. She drove in from Elk Rapids this morning, and the roads were not good, so.
Yeah, it was like an hour and a half. And I have another award Saturday night at a Christmas party that's also a surprise for another employer, and I really enjoy doing it when it's a surprise. It's a lot of fun.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
I could tell by Matt's tone when I asked him, he had to be here, it's like, okay, what's going on? He didn't put ass, though, but he did show up. That's just good. So, a great Christmas party. April, how many people do you think were there?
A lot of them, twenty.
And how many?
They were probably a little over.
And almost everyone left with some kind of door price, too, so it's nice.
Yeah.
Okay, HVAC project. Christian, I believe you're here?
Yeah.
You heard the noise this morning?
Yeah.
I think they were stopped here.
It's not a progress.
If you look at the picture, you see some, well, here, I'll let you talk about.
Yeah, definitely, and you can even look here firsthand. If you turn the lights on, there's a room here. You can see running along the back wall where the radiator's have been mounted.
Oh, hi.
Very tasteful color. And they're almost kind of invisible right here against all of these chairs. So, that's definitely a sign of progress. Uh, Chet asked me last week to kind of provide you all with an update again about the project, but principally to kind of be on the record and letting the personnel and the staff here in the county know that when they can put their offices back together, and we are getting to that point. So, I've had meetings over the past week trying to provide you with as close of an estimate, an estimate, as we can. There are several milestones that we've accomplished. The boiler room piping should be completed by the end of this week, which means that we just now need to work alongside with the electrical contractor to connect the new system, and that is, of course, a precursor to beginning to turn on the new system. We're not quite there yet. There's a number of enclosures that need to be. You'll see the pipes there. Formerly, they were copper pipes just dangling there. Now they've been wrapped with insulation. The insulator goes around behind the HVAC contractor and covers all the piping so that it doesn't leak. Condensate condenses and drop water everywhere. That's the purpose of that, and also to keep it nice and warm. And those enclosures will be installed. They've all been delivered. Well, about ninety percent of them have been delivered, and we'll start, or have started installing them this week upstairs, and we'll continue through that process. The insulation is just about seventy percent done. I know I may sound a little bit like I'm rambling, but there's several kind of simultaneous moving parts. The thermostats have all been connected, and, well, not connected, but installed on the walls in the areas. So electrical's about seventy percent, sixty-five percent finished, and Ken Goodhue from ABI tells me that they will be ninety-five percent complete by the end of this year. They're looking to have the testing and balancing firm come in at the beginning of next year, first five, ten days of the month, to begin their work so that they can begin ensuring that the piping and all the valves are in the correct position and that that water can flow like it's supposed to. So, to summarize, everything's moving along just perfectly. Hopefully, we will be able to allow employees to, probably in a staggered basis, to move things back to normal shortly after the first of the year. So, are there any questions?
One thing that's key is that the staff has been very good to work with, obviously major inconvenience, but they've been very flexible, and also your staff has been very flexible. So when there's special dates in the court, or meetings like this, or that major trial we had, they worked around those schedules. And most accrues here at 6:00 a.m., so between six and nine o'clock, that's three hours of work they can do and make all the noise they want before the building opens, which is helpful. So it really has worked out, I think, quite well. Are they insulating the pipes up in the ceiling as well?
Yeah. Yep, everything gets insulated.
Commissioner Mark.
So that the damaged radiators, are those going to be on track, or are they going to replace soon enough?
We had refused that remaining shipment, and it wasn't radiator, it was enclosure, the stuff that runs up and down the walls.
Oh, okay.
And so there are several pieces of that that were in that package. Not, I mean, on the whole, it represents maybe less than ten percent of the entire order. So it's not like we don't have things that we could be doing while we're waiting for them to be refabricated.
So they replace those timely, then?
And I can't, I can't make a representation as to how much of that shipment was actually ruled damaged, just because of the timing. I think that the shipment probably did not get back there until possibly yesterday. It was here, it was delivered here a week ago, and the crate that came in was damaged. And so, you know, the contractor did as they should and refused the shipment, so it got turned around and is coming back as timely as possible. But, I mean, it's only a minor setback. Like I said, it's not that big of a, big of a project, a big of a portion of the order that was damaged, so we should recover just fine.
If you have time, go downstairs and see the new boiler room.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it blends right in. You would actually think it's been there all along.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't really, I mean, it's weird, but I've already become accustomed to the fact that that new room is there instead of, whereas before it wasn't there. So, it's interesting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Happy holidays to everyone. Happy New Year as well.
We had our last substance abuse prevention coalition meeting on Friday, another just great example of all the efforts everyone's doing, and Commissioner Rushton, maybe Commissioner Wessel want to chip in, but there was a lot of energy, I thought, last Friday, and, you know, when you do something for three years, unfortunately, sometimes it loses momentum, but I don't think that's the case with us. I think just the opposite. And we're looking at different options, different revenues to get the word out for 2020. We're going to continue. I think everyone agreed we need to focus on more education for the public, not just for students, and it's interesting because we were talking about that, and there were members from the tribe, and they said that's exactly what they want to do also. And so we're talking about partnering with them. They have some funds available. We have funds. We're talking about a media campaign, maybe some billboards, rather columns in the newspaper and so forth, just get the word out. So I think we focus a lot on the young people, but it's across the board, and so we're going to focus on the broader aspects and try to get as much information out as possible. But I really felt good after that meeting last Friday morning. Commissioner Rushton, you want to add anything? You're the chairperson.
I, I just wanted to say that, as everybody knows, we've partnered with the Five County Coalition, and they are getting the message out there in different areas, so what we're looking at doing is maybe enhancing that in Leona County. The group is, like Chet says, very energized. We're not restricted now as far as the direction we want to take because of the grant dollars. So, we're looking at upgrading our breakout committees so that we can target certain areas a little bit more effectively, like our seniors or our veterans or, you know, just parents in general, people, everybody. So, we have plans yet to make, but that's kind of the focus that we're looking at now. We had a, a new member who came last week, and I'll let Ty speak about that.
Nancy Peterson from Northport joined us. Nancy is a school board member in Northport, and I had the opportunity to work with her for several years, never knowing some of what she was struggling with in her own personal life with her husband. She's just published a book called Dear Husband: Letters to an Attic, and she, she chronicled the experiences she and her family had with substance abuse. Her husband eventually died, and she is going to be continuing to work with groups on how do we cope with and help those having addiction issues, but she's agreed to join our coalition, and she will be a nice addition.
I got a call Friday evening from someone, and they were at a meeting in Traverse City where the speakers were Judge Cooney and Judge Stepka, and during the presentations, they actually referenced Leona County in our coalition, all the work they were doing, and how much they appreciate it. So it's nice that word is getting out there, and we're moving forward, so thank you for all of your support. It's a challenge, but we're going to keep on going forward. And I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Oh, my tree's upside down sideways here. Cute. Well, that's my tree on my deck. Nope, nope, still crooked. Well, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, Joe.
Did that, do we, I don't think we have any, this is approval of agenda. Do we have any late additions? I don't have any at all. So could we have approval of the agenda as presented?
I will approve the agenda as, as presented.
I support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that bring us to public comment. Do we have any public comment? Please come forward.
Hi, Barb Conley, Northport. I have a couple of comments, and one is, thank you for making the airport governance model update available on the website. It doesn't, it's, I'm sure that there's been a lot of consideration on the airport governance model, but reading the report, it doesn't really let me know what data were used to say that the authority model was better than the commission model, and it does go through the benefits and drawbacks of each model according to the airport and according to the county's perspective, but not the public's perspective. And so, I'm just wondering if, even though there was public comment called for during this process, the report states that it was advertised in the Traverse City Record Eagle, and I hope the commission would consider having more public comment on this at times when working people can attend, so they understand what is being proposed and what are the advantages and disadvantages, not only from the airport and the county, but also from the public's point of view. So, thank you for considering that. And then, the other report that you're considering today, I just want to point out, in the Park Recreation Open Space and Greenway Plan, there's a typo on page 12 where it says that Woolsey Airport is south of Northport. In fact, it is north of Northport. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on, and that would bring us to the, it would recess, actually, the executive committee for, for the time being, for our public hearing, and the public hearing will be on, from the 2020, 2020 to the 2024, five-year community park recreation open space and greenway plan. So, at this. Steve, question. Yeah, Steve, did you want to come forward? Okay.
Oh, point of order.
Yes.
We advertise it to starting at 9:30.
Yes. Do you want to wait till 9:30?
I'm just asking, I'm just raising the point.
We should. Yeah.
So we can maybe.
I think we have to. I think you're right. I think we have to because of, it is advertised, and then we have to allow people to come, so we will have to wait till 9:30 to open up this meeting. I do think we will, we will forego the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence because we just did that, you know, at nine o'clock. So I would just have to say that we will wait till 9:30.
Can I make a suggestion that we move to item number two? Maybe we can deal with that before?
Well, I have recessed the executive meeting. Do you want to open it back up, then?
I'm just suggesting. You want to just wait five minutes?
I think we better wait five minutes.
Okay.
Five-minute break?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just take a five-minute break. Please be back here at 9:30, please. So, we will begin, we'll begin with the, the purpose of this public hearing, which would be a public hearing input on the proposed 2020 to 2024 Community Park Recreation Open Space and Greenway Plan. Do we have any public comment on this? Thought maybe helpful if they can just give a brief overview. Yeah, let's go ahead.
Yes. As you know, we hired Gosling Zubek to help us with the updated plan, the 2020 Parks and Rec Open Space and Greenway Plan. We've been working over the last few months on this with Gosling, having our hearings and our meetings and our monthly meetings, and basically focusing on this document and getting it to the point where it is today. The committees have met. Veronica Vallad being the one that is, was most complete going in, being that we're working toward a grant application with that. So, that has shown the most recent modifications as far as plan goes. We revisited Miles Kimberly. That, that plan is the one that's most in motion at this point in time. We've identified several areas in that plan that we all agree that will most likely be changing, so that'll be the next part that we really address fully with a new updated plan, if you will. Old settlers is pretty set per se, although a fair amount has been done recently. We're in the process this spring of upgrading the Grub Shack, if you will. An overhang will be installed.
Grub Shack Pavilion.
Pavilion, yeah. It's, we couldn't change the name if we wanted to. That name is in everybody's psyche, but at any rate, we're proud of what's been happening with the parks. We're very, very fortunate to have County Board of Commissioners that's supportive of Parks and Rec. We have three wonderful parks. We're working hard on making them better with the monies we have and going for grants when appropriate. And I'm happy with the way the update came out. I must say that Rob from Equalization, the, Rob Herman, is very, very close to having the new mapping for this document. The maps that you see in here are the old ones, and the new ones will be stunning. He's very, very close to having those for this document, and they will be in it for the DNR. And that's, that in and of itself is amazing, what can be done digitally with mapping and whatnot. I know from my side, from the Drain Commission's side, working with Rob, it's been really, really beneficial for me. He is, I think, very, very talented and very, very helpful, so we're able to benefit with this document from that. I don't know, Dave, what did I miss?
One of the goals in, in drafting the new plan was to provide Parks and Rec Commission with a more complete guide to further, for planning and developments on down the line. The previous five-year plan really was pretty broad in terms of directing the Parks and Rec Commission in the subsequent years after it was initially adopted. Besides the, the mapping plan, or maps that are not completely updated yet or in the packet that you have, these pages here at the end likewise, at this moment, are blank. A lot of work has been done with each of the three parks to identify our priorities in terms of the, the planning. What, what is it we want to work on first, et cetera, et cetera? A lot of work has gone into those, and I suspect that Gosling Zubek is simply getting them in order yet for proper presentation in the final draft to the, to the DNR. Those specific priorities and plans need to relate back to other portions of the plan, and that's careful word crafting, et cetera. And so we still have, that's, that's the other second part of the copy that you have that is not complete yet because it hasn't been completely word crafted and put together by our consultants, by Gosling Zubek. by our consultants, by Gosling Zubek.
At this time, it's for a public comment. On 8/8 will be time for commissioners' questions. So, so the information's been put out there. Are there any questions, statements, or concerns about the parks from the public? Seeing none, then, I will, we'll close the session for the, of the public hearing and adjourn this meeting. And then we'll, at this time, then we'll call the executive meeting back into order. Thank you very much.
Thank you, free time. Thank you.
Can we get an option for that?
No. We didn't do, we didn't, so. So then that brings us to our action items in the executive committee. And the first one is the airport governance model update. Gentlemen, we have gentlemen here from...
Good morning. I'll turn this over to our consultant, Steve Baldwin and Associates. He's gonna be presenting this morning, really, the collection of working over the past eight months with our airport governance advisory committee. And so we've talked about in a couple of the previous meetings that I've been here that we'd be bringing the update, so we're finally here to do that. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Steve Baldwin.
Thank you, Ken.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having us again today.
Morning.
I'm in the Christmas spirit. I hope you all are too. If you'll recall, we were before you, I believe, in March.
January.
April, to set forth a governance committee process to look at the governance model of the airport. Today, I'll go through the out report of the committee's work, where it stands, and next steps, and, you know, of course, that question's answers. Chad, are you my...
Yes, uh, yeah. There you go. Look at that.
Right? Not a W. So there's a discussion agenda, nothing new to you all, so let's roll that into it. So the airport, as airports do periodically, every probably five years or so, undertake a strategic planning process, looking at, you know, both their strategic plan from an operational standpoint, and both from a business standpoint. We were retained for that assignment, I think, about a year and a half to two years ago. It's been an ongoing effort, and some of the things that we've been working on have actually been implemented on the fly in that plan. But part of that plan is to take a look at the airport governance model, what the condition of the model is, where it stands, and whether it's time to make any updates to it. We did some preliminary work. We realized that your governing documents date back to the 1970s, and there's some, you know, some things in there that are not copacetic to current airport management best practices nationally. We asked the airport, we suggested the airport, the N-RAC, pursue forming a committee that involved both itself and the two counties for this dialogue, and to go through that model and determine whether updates are now in place. Both counties assigned three members to the committee, so there were a total of nine members, three from the commission and three from each county. And the question that is asked of the committee is, should the governance model and the governing documents that basically direct Kevin and his staff how to operate the airport, should it be maintained as is, should be modified within the framework of the current model? Should it be moved to an authority format, which is, is trending, really trending over the last 20 years, quite honestly? And that would be under the Public Airport Act and Michigan Act 95. And although that's called Act 95, I'd like to point out that that act was passed in 2015. So your previous review to this governance model didn't have this tool available until this iteration of the review. Or a fourth option is to go to your state legislature and pursue something that is very individually crafted for your airport. And I'll talk about that a little bit early down into the slideshow. And then if changes are necessary, to make a recommendation and report it back to, to full commission bodies. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna go through what the committee looked at. It was a very structured dialogue. It was undertaken over a period of about eight or nine months. Monthly meetings, public participation, public comment opportunities before and after meetings, as well as one meeting was dedicated just strictly to taking in public input. There's been a call for additional input. We're in that process now, so. But your airport actually goes back, obviously, to its creation in 1935. Very typical nationally that airports become community owned as a war surplus act. Airports were flying fields and training facilities for the military throughout the nation, and then when the war ended, these airfields still existed and they were given to their host communities. The airport transferred from the government back to Traverse City in '49, and then the N-RAC was formed in '71. And throughout this process, it was really the two counties and the city of Traverse City. In 1990, Traverse City opted out of that pack, and it was the two counties. Leland began to inquire about alternative governance models in 1995, and then the commission brought up her strategic plan in '17. So the point is, it's a very long dialogue that's been occurring about this model you have at your airport, but some new things that are particular to Act 95 that came up in 2015, it's now an available tool, has not been available in the past. So they looked at, obviously, the joint operating agreement between two counties, dissected that. There's seven appointees to the current commission, five from Grand Terrors, two from Leland, and the current agreement sets the powers limitation of the commission. The commission's been operating this airport pretty autonomously, and maybe sometimes, you know, really pushing the envelope with respect to its powers and limitations. And I don't mean that in a negative way, but the agreement you have today is very, it's, it's a large agreement, but it doesn't consider the things that you consider today in operating airport, right? The policy oversight of the airport, times have changed. So here's a couple of things about the current documents. So there's conflicting terms in there, and terms meaning the dates of the two controlling documents. One is the operating agreement, and the other is the lease agreement, because the two counties still physically own the property of the airport and lease it back to the commission for operation. That's, by the way, before the question is asked, that's, there's no value to that lease. There's no transfer of funds for that lease. It's a technical lease. Within those agreements, when the two counties may be in opposing viewpoints about a policy matter at the airport, or a claim even against the airport, there is no process for dispute resolution. So that's, that's concerning. There's an 85% cost sharing implication within those agreements. 85-15, Grand Terrors County, you know, bearing the brunt of that. But this cost sharing implication is not tied, it's a liability, or, or there's really, you know, there's no basis for it that we can really discern, no really huge basis to that. So it's no dispute resolution. Property management, the management of the airport under your current structure is difficult, difficult at best. The commission is not empowered currently to buy or sell property. And I think they were before you recently about buying a residential property that was a undisputed, non-contested, routine property transfer that took, I think, about nine months to execute because you have to deal with the commission boards to get to the point where you want to do a property expansion, then you have to deal with Leland County, then you have to deal with Grand Terrors County. And it's a process of getting on all these agendas, doing sometimes study sessions and what have you. The airport property, when you look at airport map, airport is made up of hundreds of pieces of property. These pieces of property come into the airport hold, there's usually like the initial, the initial acquisition of the airport from the ownership that's had, and then property comes into play over the years, and then little pieces, piece here, piece there, piece there, through FAA grant agreements that allow you to put up NAVAids and do things at the airport you need to do, to put in keys, utility rooms, and infrastructure. There are all these property rights on the airport. And I don't know specifically for Grand Traver, for Cherry Valley or Cherry Capital, but typically for an airport like this, there are hundreds, hundreds of these property interests out there. This constant maintenance, property management is, is constant maintenance of an airport operator, and we don't have an easy streamlined process at this airport to deal with. Next slide. Your board membership is, as I noted, five from Grand Terrors, two from Leland, depending on which county you're operating in, but generally speaking, there's no, there's no minimal qualifications to serve as a board member for very, very valuable and somewhat complex asset of your community. Also, the appointment removal process, the appointment process is usually through application of your boards, or you look for, you know, you solicit annually for volunteers to serve. But there is no removal process, and somebody mentioned to me, and I don't know if this is totally factual, but that would actually take an act of the legislature, act of the governor, after you make an appointment, that you have somebody to remove. So we like to see both an appointment process that has, that is logical and business orientated, and then also a removal process. If a board member is acting out, or, you know, even, even is in conflict with the law in some instances, you have to have a way to deal with it. So you don't... There's certain things in the agreements that violate the FAA policy. One of them is profit sharing. So your agreements right now call for any residual profit on the airport annualized to revert back to the city of Traverse City. Well, first of all, Traverse City removed itself from the pact in 1990s. Secondly, is that, is, is an undisputed violation of FAA policy. People in this process keep asking us questions about that. We keep sharing the written word, we keep preaching the gospel, but you cannot take revenue off your airport and use it for alternative purposes. FAA puts a lot of federal money into that airport facility, and their, their policy is that if you're, if you have excess revenue, you put it in reserve for future airport projects, or you use it to reduce your operating expenses at your airport today. The FAA's fundamental philosophy is that you adjust your rates and charges at your airport so that you have a zero net sum gain at the airport. It's a public use facility, and we don't want to see you taking money off that airport, putting it in the Parks and Rec, putting it in your highway budget, putting it in your general fund. It's disallowed. So that statement in your, in your agreement certainly has been violation.
Steve, your question.
Yep.
Have either county ever taken any revenue from Traverse City Airport? No. I'm just making the point that, yeah, the agreement may say that, but it never happened. So it was never a violation.
Well, I think when the, I believe, the fact that I know, when your documents were crafted in 1970, the revenue diversion act of the FAA wasn't in place yet. So, so, but there was a time when your airport was into negative operating costs at rim, right? So nobody was looking at the airport as a cash cow. It was operating very marginally from revenue standpoint.
Except up till '95, we paid money to the airport yearly.
Right, right. Another point is, your, your documents also refer zoning back to the local city. That's in violation of Michigan statute. Michigan Airport's Act maintains zoning control within the airport perimeter for all, all matters zoning, and anything that's aeronautical outside of the fence of the airport also falls within the airport's control. That's a state law, so that is just in, in conflict with your agreements.
Say that again, please.
So anything within the, within the airport fence, or actually, there's a map of the airport if it's located on the technical map of the airport's holdings. The airport controls that zoning. And if it's outside that area, but it's still aeronautical related, so if it's a NAVAid, lighting, an antenna tower, the airport still controls that.
Thank you.
It's safety in operations for your airport, right? So they preserve that so that the local entity really can't disrupt that. It's not intentional. And then the reversionary clause of the agreements basically say that if the airport should ever cease to exist in the airport, that the property would revert back to the city, yet the city withdrew from the pact. So again, it is old and dated and needs to be updated to current needs. The committee researched the different acts within the Michigan statutes with regard to what options exist to, to change governance model today. So there is a code in your state statutes that talks about everything from state airports to public authorities, to regional airports, and so on and so forth. As I mentioned, Act 95 came into play in 2015, and that happened as a result of Kent County, Michigan, wanting to move the Dural Airport, Airport from its county in operation to an independent authority. And none of the existing statutes really fit the mold for Kent County, so they went up to the legislature with a one-off proposal for legislation that would accommodate their needs, and the legislature basically said, no. Figure out a, a bill, bring us a language and a bill, a format, that would allow other municipalities in Michigan to opt in as well. We don't want every airport to stay coming up here with a bunch of one-offs. We understand the need, so give us something that's flexible enough that works for you, and I'll just kind of opt in. So 2015, that statute was proposed. It was brought to the two houses in the Michigan legislature. It passed both houses unanimously, and the governor signed it within a day or two afterward. And that created that statute that gives you the flexibility today to, to do things a little differently. But that's not a process that happened overnight, right? So you're having a long deliberation up here. Trust me, I do this a lot. Your deliberation is long. There was a long deliberation on Act 95, right? It's in another part of your state. There's similar boards, there's commission, county commission, airport board review, community involvement. So it, it just considered that because everything you're doing in this dialogue here is a, is a repeat dialogue, so. But they did come through, they passed that statute, and as I noted, it passed unanimously. And then the committee also reviewed both the status of commercial service airports within the state of Michigan and nationally. So they did a little compare and contrast where you stand today. Seventeen commercial service airports in the state of Michigan, and 59% are county run, 29 authority of power or commission. Next slide, please. It's a little bit hard to read, but these are your Michigan... Oh, wait, Chad. I don't, I think, I think your administrator should be the IT. So this, this is interesting because, you know, for somebody that's familiar with using this data, this immediately tells me why, a story. But if you notice, as your airports are larger, and these are ranked by employment, they, they, they over time move from municipal, city, county, commission to authority model because the airports grow, and as the airport business grows, it's getting ever more complex, right? So inside your airport, you have a fire department, you have a police department, you have a parking authority, you have retail, you have food and beverage. You know, back in the day, you used to walk in your airport, and you had your mom and pop diner, give you the best macaroni and cheese you ever had in your life, and you got your plane, you left, and your family met you at the gate, right? It's changed a little bit. So, and airports are getting more complex. They're finding that within the municipal structure, it's getting very, very hard for them to make timely decisions and have the agility they need to move along with the airlines and their business partners. So they, they end up changing their model. So that's why the top of the list tends to be more authority, acclimated, than the lower part of the list. Next slide, please. This is very hard to read. Can we blow that up? There's many different forms of governance throughout the country. There's even, there's even Indian reservation forum, there's a university format, you know, county, city, and so on. So the committee looked nationally at what, where this model... So the committee looked nationally at what, where this model, where the, the timing of these models stand and what's happening. That's the next slide. So we looked at the state, and then when we looked nationally, this is, this is, this is the breakup of basically your commercial service airports nationally. So if you take the 30% that are authority and the 7% that are port authority, so authority is just the airport authority, port authority is like port authority in New York and New Jersey, it's a multimodal authority, right? They have bridges, tolls, tunnels, water, water ports, and airports, so multimodal. So if you take the multimodal authorities and the airport authorities, about 37% of the airports nationally are within that model, and about seven, I'm sorry, county model, I think, is at par, I think, that's like 15%. There's, over the last 20 years in the industry, so put this in perspective, there's about 70, plus or minus, small hub airports nationally, about 35 medium, and about 35 large hub, right? So you've got this cohort of about 150, 160 airports that we're talking about here. What's happened nationally is, I'd say, plus or minus, over the last 20 years, about 20 airports have shifted their governance model. All those tiny airports, I think about 18, 17 or 18 of them have moved from a non-authority structure to an authority structure. And then there's a couple of outliers, right? Like Tulsa, Oklahoma, they moved to a model called the trust model. It's a bit akin to an authority model, but it's more designed to allow them to raise revenue through issuing indebtedness, bond, bonds, and so they did a trust model. But typically, over the last 20 years, the overwhelming trend has been to move to an The committee looked at, so this was to somebody's comment this morning, they looked at the advantage and disadvantage from several different perspectives. They looked at from, from the airport or the ANRAS perspective, they looked at it from the county commission, the county interest perspective, and they looked at it from the public perspective. They did, you know, the pros and cons, I'm not going to go through every one of these, but they, they went through the pros and cons of these different perspectives. And so it's kind of interesting because, I'll get the next slide. When you look at it, for example, from the airport's perspective, on the right side, the second bullet down, it says, you know, this is a, the, the airport's perspective disadvantage, it cannot, it cannot levy a tax. It cannot levy millage. So from another person's perspective, they say, oh, no, that's a positive perspective, right? So we tried to capture them by these categories, so depending on where you sit or what your perspective is, the pros and cons might be a little different. The reason not being able to impose a millage is, is built into Act 95. Act 95, the 2015 Act, specifically prohibits an airport from making a tax assessment. The airport is completely funded by user fees, you, there's no tax revenue in the airport. There's no local tax, no state tax, no federal tax, completely self-sufficient from that standpoint. And then, in, up there in the summary, these were the findings of advantages. So you can go through these, but I think they all come down to summarizing to have a more business-like, nimble operating environment, allows the airport to follow a business model as closely to a business model as it needs to effectively operate without losing public accountability, right? So why not losing public accountability? Because that, Act 95 has a requirement for, it specifies the qualifications to serve as a board member, it specifies the open government, means law, and other transparency requirements, it requires annual audit recording, it requires annual community recording, and so on. So the conditions under that option are actually greater than the conditions that the commission has today. The commission is very open, as it is today, so, and then there is nothing that preempts whatever board is seated in the future from even, even layering on more transparency, more openness as it desires, right? But the bar is set very high in Act 95, it's very, very high, which is good. So with regard to the public values, the stakeholders were all participated in a survey initiative, and they were basically asked, you know, what was important to them with regard to the airport, how it's governed and how it's operated in the future. And I'm going to show you that in that slide. But before we go, Chet, just to go over that process again, structured dialogue, seven committee meetings, one additional meeting specific to inviting public comment, there's, I think that there's actually been more on study session at this point, and obviously not, and I think there was a study session and a board meeting. And this culminated with the committee reporting out to you with a, with a recommendation by resolution unanimously passed to move to an authority model. That's the time you're playing today. There was also input from business leaders, community advocates, concerned citizens, and so on. So business leaders are excited about this opportunity, they, they will come out in droves if you ask them to show and express their, their position on this, but honestly, it's not beneficial. I can tell you that this is, they each showed one meeting, and they were in overwhelming this for the committee's recommendation. So through the survey process I mentioned, and stakeholder outreach, these were the concerns. Reducing liability of the counties. So right now, the counties are both, you know, we don't really know, let's say jointly liable. If there were a fiscal default at the airport, the county's sharing that, if there's a claim, the county's sharing that, and so on. Under the authority model, well, you know, anybody's going to file a lawsuit or make a claim is going to cast a very broad net. You have one additional layer that shields you from reaching here into the county domain, right? You have the authority, which would be a body politic, right? That's how it would be defined under the state government statute. And the authority can run its own defense against the claim, and it can even file bankruptcy, right? So, which always, you know, let's say that were to occur and likely in some form of a agreed upon settlement to avoid that financial default, but it wouldn't come back to, onto the counties. So that, that was something people talked about. Obviously, there's a concern, there's an interest in maintaining a high level of public transparency and accountability, mechanisms for input. The regional perspective is, is really good. Everybody agrees, and, and, that I've been exposed to in this process, and the committee, that the Cherry Valley, Cherry Capital Airport is, is, is your region's airport, right? It's a regional asset. People come in from all over, we want that to happen. We have a region now serving the airport, people are coming in from 100 miles away to use that service, and we have some, a minor amount of analytic, analytic, almost anecdotal analytics that, that many of them are coming in to actually take advantage of the Costco. They're coming in for shopping over there, loading up runway vans and taking them back home. So, but the, but the thing about the regional perspective is, is an opportunity to bring in stakeholders from outside your immediate domain, right? Like your tourism industry, your economic development industry, and offer them a seat at the table and that value input, and hopefully linkages back to their organization where they can bring a little bit of horsepower to your initiatives, you know, to help, help the airport. And that Act 95 requires that if you were to seat an authority and seat a board under that pact, you have to have at least one seat dedicated from outside the region, so. Clear and modern legislation, you know, it, through these, through these decades, the considerations that went into Act 95 also were designed so that the airport operators would have a, a single, easy to understand resource with regards to their authority and their powers, right? So it's pretty well stated and spelled out there, so it's taken a lot of question off the table. Obviously, creating a big business focus and efficiencies, and then promoting the airport as an economic asset, and providing it some service, you know, these are the things that came out of that survey process. So as I mentioned, November 20th, the committee out recorded to Grand Travers County requesting the county to adopt the resolution for the staff to now sit down and develop articles of the corporation to move in the direction of authority. So that's not a decision to do authority, that's a decision to say, we're going to the next step, we want to see, you know, we want, now we want to see the details, we want to see what the covering documents and their draft form are going to look like, and what the two county commission administrators and their teams and the airport are going to come up with in bringing a consensus documents forward for consideration. And that resolution, November 20th, was also passed unanimously from Grand Travers County. So we're here to get the same instruction, I think, that is to join that dialogue at the next step. Can I take questions?
Mr. Anderson. I look at this, I understand there's problems with our current structure that could be, that could be fixed under the current structure. So I ask myself, what problems are we really trying to address here? What problems do we have at the airport today that we are trying, are trying to address with this? And I say, hmm, I look at these other airports, there are, you know, I look at our airport, we're expanding, we have more flights, more departures, running in the black, excellent management, you know, that, that are doing their job, we have really good airport members, you know, our, you know, we have one of our best commissioners assigned to the airport commission, they're doing, I think they're doing a great job. I think the airport's doing a great job. So again, what problem am I really trying to address here?
Well.
Let me, let me finish. And I said, okay, I look at our airport and I said, you know, we're expanding, we're, you know, it's growing, we're doing a great job. And I go turn around, and I look at some of the other airports in the state that are authorities, they're shrinking. Their governance structure isn't doing so hot. Is it government structure? Is it the governance structure that's driving this? I don't see that. You know, I understand, you know, some of the concerns that are out there with our current structure, they could be fixed, but I don't see the problems at Cherry Capital today that need to be addressed because we're in good shape, we're expanding, we're doing something right. I understand, you know, it would be easier for the airport to structure under the authority to do things, they don't have to come to us, but I'm going to look, I'm going to give the example of the Costco. The airport people came to us and said, hey, here's, here's this opportunity. It was approved just like that. We didn't hold things up from a, a standpoint of any great amount of time, other than to get on our schedule and explain the thing, and it went through. And I, I, you know, I really do think it went through very, very quickly because everybody was in agreement that, yeah, you know, they're doing a great job, this is a good thing for the airport, they're self-sufficient, we're not taking money out, we're not, you know, we're not having to put money into it. It's all good. So what problem are we trying to address by changing the structure?
You know, from what I, what I understand out of that, that process is that the other county people and citizens have a problem with Costco, right? Like, they didn't want Costco. So the, one of the biggest problems you have with your current structure is that you've got three boards instead of one board trying to operate the airport. And that's a problem. So what does that mean? If you, if you stand up as authority, this board is going to make its appointments, you're going to do them in due diligence, you're going to do them with set of qualifications, and you're still going to have a voice at that table, then the other county's going to do the same. But all airport business is going to occur at one table. And that, without that happening, you, you have a pretty big problem going on in the community with the airport. And if you look at the airport, if you look at it from an airline perspective or another business entity's perspective, you know, businesses don't like, investors don't like, they don't like uncertainty, they hold back. Well, what about you have to do with Leland County? What about you have to do with Grand Travers County? Oh, and then I have to do with the airport. The community people are really quite confused right now with where they should go and, and make their voice heard. So you want to have your airport business, through your representatives, conducted at a singular table. Pretty big issue. You've got properties, you've got your statement about correcting your other documents, of course you can stick with the commission model, right? You have to redo those documents. No problem, right?
We do it, or other things, every year.
You'll have a problem. You've got 85, 15% liability split right now, you've got seat assignments, you've got some other things going on. To bring both counties into consensus on that, I believe you can do it, but I also believe that by the time you get on with that, it'll be a year-long process and a very expensive process, and you're still going to have these other, you know, problems in your model without having a unified table, with having your airport over politicized. So.
I don't see that today.
Well, you don't today, but we don't know what the, what the consistency of either county board will look like tomorrow. So I know in Kent County, that was a pretty big deliberative issue because in their, in their history, the airport had to come at one point very politicized and controlled by a singular party, and they were fearful of that in the future, so they want that. And in fact, if you look at Act 95, there's actually a provision now built into it that no more than 45% of the appointees to the board can be elected officials. That's where that came from. So they look at the airport as a very valuable business, part of the community, they don't want it to be tampered with politically.
I don't see that happening today.
Commissioner Sloss.
It's kind of happening in this process a little bit, believe it or not.
A couple of things. The first, I, I realize that the authority model has been, governance model has been kind of where we've been going since, from the beginning, and, and I can understand where there is, from a business standpoint, there are a number of things that definitely would need to be addressed to remain in a county model. But I have to say, there, there's a reason why we go through three boards, and that's to protect the public. The public has an opportunity to input, and that's very, very important. But also, I want you to talk to me a little bit about eminent domain, because as I read through this, in here it talks about, from a business standpoint, the ability to expand non-aeronautical types of revenues, which is important to the airport, but also theoretically, an airport authority would give the airport authority the, the ability to condemn properties without the county involvement whatsoever, and I can see in terms of runway expansion and this kind of thing, that might be necessary for businesses. Would it also be done potentially? So to me, eminent domain is one of those issues that I'd like to hear you address a bit.
Sure, absolutely. So eminent domain comes up every single transaction out of the unit. This is sort of a fundamental fact. You will always have eminent domain, one entity or another, because you're operating a public facility, just like a highway or another piece of infrastructure, and it will require a governmental entity to maintain the power of eminent domain in the interest of the public. So that's either going to be the power of eminent domain with the airport authority board, or it revert back to the counties, depending on how you break this up and structure. And eminent, you, implementing Eminent Domain Procedures Act for the taking of piece of private property for business purposes, it, I haven't seen it, I can't say it hasn't ever been done, I haven't seen it. ever been done, I haven't seen it. Eminent domain is reserved for clearing that hazardous obstruction at the end of the runway that the property owner refuses to deal with themselves. I'm not going to trim my tree, I'm not going to trim my tree, I'm not going to trim my tree. We have airplanes that hit trees coming in our approach, and it causes fatal accidents. At some point, that tree's got to be trimmed. You're going to see eminent domain for that type of, of condition, putting, putting through a public utility, could even be a burial or underground where a property owner says, why you dig up my lawn and run the, run that pipe through here? We're going to take an ease and run that pipe. Whether you leave that with the authority, or you build in a provision that doesn't give them that power, that that power stays with the county, but somebody's going to have that power. It's not like it isn't going to be there.
No, I, I realize that, but it looked like it would transfer to the authority and no longer be in the hands.
It doesn't have to.
So you're saying there is an option to build that in.
Sure, you can set it up any way you want. What you have to consider is, is because it is going to be there, where, where does that lie best? You know, some of the airport boards we deal with, they don't want it. It's political, controversial, like that? Who do you say so, for, like, do you want it? So, but in the dialogue, and it, and as you direct your staff to sit down, take and start having, you know, a full discussion and consideration as they draft the document together, that's where they'll come back to what, what they believe is the best proposal.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lotner, do you have a question?
Yes, I do, thank you. So you mentioned the 85-15 liability, but what are the actual chances of it actually ending up being a liability for a county? My first question.
Well, there's different kinds of liability, right? There's fiscal default liability, which I don't really, at this point, believe you're going to have a fiscal default liability, although I could be wrong, right? We saw 9/11 happen, and when 9/11 happened, everybody had fiscal liability, like the plane stopped flying. So I can't, I can't project that.
Okay, my prediction is probably, probably, yeah. A while back, you spoke about having some flexibility, giving this authority more flexibility in changes. What were you referring to?
Can you say that again?
You spoke about having some flexibility or, for changes.
Okay, so, you know, you're, the way, let's talk about how the process works if you, if you're going to vote to an authority, right? So there's basically three controlling documents, so you've got to have two set of governing documents. So first is your articles of incorporation. How, how do you incorporate the authority? So it's a small document, but it will, it'll establish the authority, establish the, the number of seats, who appoints them, and how many, and what the term is, those housekeepings. And are you, am I...
That's my third question. So what are you saying, what are you saying is the changes and the flexibility come with writing our own authority, then? Or is that proposed?
That is, that is one form of flexibility, but this, that, once you establish that, it's not cast in stone, it may even bomb plant in the future.
Okay, so then, to enter, because I've got a concern with that statement right there and one of my issues. Second is that board then. So we would transfer over our title to the airport? We would give up all...
That's undecided, that's not yet decided. So there's two forms for dealing with the...
So it's in Act 95...
One, one form is that you could transfer the property ownership.
Title?
Buy, buy fee simple, transfer to the authority.
Local governments, right? Title and interested.
You could continue to carry a lease. Kent County decided to continue to carry a lease. There's more than one option here.
All right, and, let's see. Well, I'll...
Did you have any more?
Well, I, I, I have some reservations with, with this whole process. And because I think that, as Tony said, we may have some housekeeping to do, some issues cleaned up, some documents cleaned up, some policies to go over, et cetera, but I don't think we need to move to an authority to do that. And I've cut, you know, you can say, well, because one of my biggest problems is going to be the, the ability for a millage in the future. And you say, well, this act doesn't allow for that. And that's a stroke of the pen with legislation in the future. So that's a concern that I've got, that we would lose that local control. Right now, that would have to come to us, and we would have that ability to say yes or no.
You still have that ability of county rule. You just don't have that authority. The airport, if the airport required a tax subsidy, both counties can still step to the plate and make sure that the airport is stay solid and managed throughout the free community. That doesn't go away. All it says is that the board that you appoint to the airport, they can't do it in a lateral way.
But we would not even know yet how that board would be selected. What would be...
The question, the question is before you today, is to have the staff work on next steps to put these details together, so the next time we come here, these questions are proposed to you in form of proposed answers.
Last question, Mr. Chair.
So today's not, this, today's not a request to form authority, today's a request to allow staff to package this so that you can see what, what's proposed in detail.
Or direct the airport board to, to just do some housekeeping, et cetera. There's many options we've got today, and this is just one of them, but your ask is this. Also, today, can the airport bond today?
Not without the county approval.
Thank you. So this allows the airport to bond without...
Not necessarily. Depends on the rules, I'm right?
Mm-hmm. Okay, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wessler.
Thank you. One question I had was on eminent domain, and I think you've answered that. Another question I, I come with is if I'm a neighbor, living around the airport, people that may have less influence to the authority than they might have with their county commission. And I, so it's representation that I'm concerned about, and, and I've, I've heard some concerns since the publication of the three hearings in Traverse City. And I'd like to suggest that we have a public hearing in Leon County, maybe as a part of next week's county commission meeting, and allow our, our county residents to have some input. So that is my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to second.
Yes, discussion?
Yes, we'll go to discussion.
I thought, I thought Will was chair. So the motion is a, a public hearing next week or as soon as possible, clearly, it may take us to January to have.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
May, may I get, I'm all for that. I mean, if you want to have additional public input, there's been a lot of public input. But just so you are aware, Act, Act 95, if you decide to go in that direction, you're statutory obligated to hold a public hearing at the time you make your announcement of your intent to go in that direction. So you will, if you hold a public hearing next week, you will be holding another public hearing if you make your intent on it. So, so you know, again, part of that good governance in, in Act 95 requires a public hearing. But you have to do it when you file that notice of intent, or when you make the, when you issue a notice of intent. So if you have one next week, it's not going to count. You got, you'll still have to have one, you know?
Mr. Chairman.
Just a point of clarification, this is the executive committee, so the motion would only forward it till next week.
Right.
So you can't have a public hearing next week.
Which...
You can set a date for a public hearing in the future.
I, I think, you know, holding two is fine. You know, this one would allow people to see the full range of opportunities, whereas, as you've just stated, the other public hearing under Act 95 would be targeted to the fact that the decision has been made...
Right.
...and an intent is moving forward. So I think we back it up where it should be.
I just wanted you to be, be aware of that.
So if we pass this motion, it just moves that motion to next week, and we wouldn't really have to have, be able to have a public hearing?
I move to recommend.
Of course.
Does everybody understand that?
Do you have a date that you'd like to recommend for the public hearing? Do you want to decide that next week?
I, I'm comfortable with deciding that at next week's meeting, when we can look at calendars.
Let me try it, so...
We do have another meeting later in the month, but we have the opportunity to add that too.
Some of it's yours.
Which is horrible timing, so we can look at that next week.
You don't have to, but I'm just saying...
I understand what you're saying. Middle of the day, though, more likely...
We have an organizational meeting in January.
That's right.
Right. So, all those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Rush.
I, I just wanted to say that this is a process going forward. There's a lot of things we don't even know about what this will look like. And I think what Grand Traverse County is doing is they put a study group together, am I not, do you, maybe...
They want to refer to staff to break back articles, draft articles of incorporation, have that discussion to go, see what the next, what it would look like, to answer a lot of the open questions.
Right.
We brought up eminent domain, we brought up zoning, we brought up board makeup. So a lot of those questions are great questions, but we really don't know what that would look like. And so what they did is directed staff, administrator, to, to work on that, to bring back that exam.
Would you be interested in hearing what Grand Traverse is, maybe administrator is here from Grand Traverse?
Could that come up and just tell what occurred to Grand Traverse County?
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Nate Dalgier from Grand Traverse. We're doing exactly what you're doing, essentially. The board has, on a couple of different occasions, directed me to answer specific questions that each board member has on our current governance model, as well as concerns that they have about the move to an authority. So over the last several months, I've been engaged in the process of reviewing our current governance model, the agreement that is rather, it's a small agreement, but there's a lot of history that goes with it. And so we're in the process of preparing answers for them that I will be giving them in January. They did direct staff with, after the presentation by Mr. Baldwin, to work with Mr. Janik and our staff, as well as your staff, to come up with articles of incorporation, what they would look like. And in the process of creating those articles, answering the questions that had been brought forward with the creation of the articles. So one of the concerns that I had was the public input process. And while it was extensive through the AGAC, I wanted to have a public input session before Mr. Janik and I started on this, down this road. So that is occurring today, and tomorrow, at, at our board's direction, they do the exact same thing that you're trying to do now. They wanted to have that in a, in a board meeting in December, so we will be having that tomorrow. And they want answers to the questions that you're posing right now. So it is my direction that, given this board's approval of this direction, to work with Mr. Janik and answer these questions.
Let me suggest this. It looks like with our schedule, public hearing probably not until January.
Right.
Like, just, for the means coming up and the holidays, I don't see how we can do it before January and have people access. So based on what Grand Traverse County did, I would like to have permission to work with Mr. Dalgier to answer some of these questions, and we may be able to come back in January with some answers to some of these questions that you brought up and that the public may bring up. It doesn't mean that you're in favor of going, it simply means working with Mr. Dalgier and his staff to try to get some answers to some of these questions that you brought up here this morning that the public may bring up.
Commissioner Rush.
And I would make that motion that we allow our administrator to further review the options in the process of going forward with looking at a new governance model for the airport. Because the existing one is not going to, it, it, the existing one has to be changed. So we have to have some sort of a governance model. And giving them the opportunity to get all of our questions answered, giving the public the opportunity to weigh in, it's going to give us a better understanding on which way we want to go. We need more information, is my opinion. So I would make the motion that we allow our administrator to work with the teams that are out there, Grand Traverse County's teams, I don't know who they put together, and move forward with this process, because we have to make a decision one way or the other.
I'll second.
Commissioner Sillister.
And I, you used the word options, and I liked that. So it is not just the authority...
It's always an option.
Yes, all options.
Yeah.
That we have questions about any of those options that...
Well, I would encourage all of you to give those concerns to me, so we can try to address them.
Right.
And at least give you some responses prior to the public hearing.
Commissioner Anderson.
I would like not just looking at the authority. If we have issues, maybe we stay with the commission and we address those issues. But, you know, we can address the issues in more than one way, is what I'm trying to say. I don't want this to be, you know, the train is gathering steam, you either get on or get run over. That's not what this is. You know, I'm, I'm looking at this, if we approve this, this is strictly information. And I am not convinced, if I, if I've not made that clear, I am not convinced that we need to change our governance structure. We need to change, maybe we need to look at the, change in the agreements to update them, but based on the operation of the airport today, I don't see a problem that says change. I see, I see just the opposite. Our airports are working really great, some of these other airports that our authorities aren't working so great, maybe we should stay with the commission. So I am not convinced. So I just want to make that clear.
Commissioner Wessler.
And, and, and I understand why, why our administrator may want to work moving forward, but I'm, I'm a little worried that this rushes the process. This has been in, in the works for quite some time. Now, all of a sudden, we don't have time to have a public hearing before we begin our work. And, and, and I, I don't want, if I vote for this motion that Commissioner Rush has just made, I still hope that we have a public hearing on this issue early in January.
Well, I think we're all saying the same.
Commissioner Lotner.
For that very reason, I'm not going to support this motion, because I think that it's getting the cart in front of the horse. We haven't had an opportunity to speak publicly about how we feel on this, to chat as far as the direction goes. We haven't had a public hearing, we haven't heard from our, well, it gets me back to, I have heard from a lot of constituents that are very concerned about this authority model, as they understand it. So before we direct chat to do what, I think we should be giving chat some direction on where we want to go and what we want, because I'm not familiar right now, today, going forward with this authority model. I'm forward, I'm, I'm in favor of going forward with some changes to the governance model, so that we are better in compliance. But I'm still wary of the authority model. So I don't know exactly what chat's going to do walking out of here today, because all he's heard is what we've been allowed to speak on today. So I think January would be a time to direct chat.
Commissioner Rush.
May I, may I make an observation, or is not allowed?
Head out this time, Commissioner Rush, to this floor.
We, right now, don't even know what an authority model for our airport would look like. We have no idea, okay? We don't know how the board would be made up, we don't know, there's just a lot of little innuendos. And I can understand, because I myself was concerned about how this affects our citizens as far as taxation, and as you all know, I'm, I'm one of the commissioners that does not like to go out there and tax our citizens. It's a burden. But in the same token, you know, we call the airport an asset, but when you look at the, when you look at the asset from the county's perspective, okay? How is it an asset for the county?
Representation, that's my, I was going to say representation.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, representation. And I don't know where the idea comes up that you think that the county board would lose representation on that board. that board. From my understanding is, we, the two counties, will decide on structure. There are some caveats with that, according to the way the legislation is written, but there's still going to be commissioners on there. There's still going to be people from our community that are serving in the same fashion. And, I guess the point that I'm trying to make here is, you don't know enough yet about the structure and what the options are in that particular structure to benefit us in a positive way. So, we don't know what we don't know until we have our two counties work together and bring these to the table, so that, one, we know, and, two, we can present it to the public and say, option number one, option number two, option number three. Because you all don't know enough yet.
Commissioner Redd.
I think that having a administrator work with the administrator of Grand Traverse County and providing us with more information is only going to clarify things for us. And it's not saying that we're going to go with the authority model, it's just saying that we're going to find out more about that. And, at the same time, we can find out about changing our, you know, I mean, staying with the current model and making the changes there. But, it's just gathering more information that'll keep us more informed for the future, so.
Commissioner Suss.
I, I think the concern here is, the report, which was very well done, as I said, there was kind of a bias from the beginning to go towards the airport model, which I understand. But, it talked about the pros and cons for the county versus the airport, but it was all from that perspective. You did, did talk about the current model that we're, we're in now with the county, with the commission, and what needed to be done, or not really what was needed to be done, what were the drawbacks that needed fixing. But, there are four options that were tossed out there, but no pros and cons on anything other than really the airport authority. And I think that's what people are reacting to. So, when I said, looking at all options and giving our administrator questions, I mean all options, not just the authority model option. And I think that's where you were coming from too, Commissioner Ann Sorki. So, I don't know if you wanted to amend your motion to make sure that that was in there. I'm very comfortable having our administrator work with the Grand Traverse administrator to explore these kinds of things.
Commissioner West.
I, I'm comfortable with the administrator working with Grand Traverse County. I don't know that we need a motion to have that happen. You routinely work with the county administrator from Grand Traverse County on issues. And I think maybe Commissioner Rush's motion sends the wrong signal to the people that we want to get public input from. It's almost like we're going ahead and, and making a plan, and when we're halfway there, we're going to ask you your opinion. So, I think I'm not going to support Commissioner Rush's motion, but I would encourage our administrator to continue to work with, with Grand Traverse County in an informal way, as, as you have been doing.
Commissioner Redd.
I would ask that you repeat the motion, because I didn't understand that the motion was going to be limiting, as you're suggesting. Just to the authority model. I mean, I thought it was.
That's a legitimate, ask them to hear the motion again, that's a legitimate request.
Commissioner Redd, ask the floor.
Thank you. Thanks, Tony.
Can you find it, Allison?
The motion was to allow Administrator Janik to work with Grand Traverse County to further review the actions for, to bring back to the board for review.
Is, is anybody happy, questions about that?
To me, it just says all options.
Right.
A question for the chair.
Yes.
Do we, I'm back to my question. Do, do we need a motion to have Mr. Janik work with Grand Traverse County administrator? I think not.
We may not need to. I mean, he works with them, I'm sure, many things. But, I mean, we do have it on the floor, it's been seconded, and so it is, is a motion. I mean, all, all of these things that we're talking about were presented at the, you know, the commission meetings, or the, you know, at the airport, when, when we went to, to discuss this. I mean, all of us had those same questions that, that you're talking about. And, it's not knowing what's going to be in, in, in the new, let's say, the authority's rules that make us all wonder what it's going to be. And that, and, and the purpose of this is to try to get these rules set down, so we know whether we can accept them, or we want to amend them, or change them, or do whatever. I mean, that's, if we want to have, you know, three people from Lelandon, three people from Grand Traverse, and one people, one person from out of the region, or if we want to put nine people on it. I mean, all of those things are questions that will have to come up, and we'll have to decide on when it comes to if we want the authority, or if we want to go back to the commission. So, so it's, it's all a question. And this is the idea, to get an idea of what the authority would be. And, and if we don't like it, then we can go back to the commission, and then, but it would give us some groundwork of what we need to put in for the commission. So, so to me, it's, it's trying, this, the purpose of this is to try to see what the authority's going to be, because we don't really know. At this point, there's a lot of questions about what it's going to be. And I, and I'd like to know, myself, what, what the parameters are for this authority. You know, and I, I think, you know, I think Commissioner Lotner has valid points, Commissioner Ann Sorki does. I think all of you have very legitimate questions concerning this. And that's what I'm, I'd like to get some idea of what this authority's going to look like. If we have, and that's, and my hope is that he can set up these rules, so we can see that.
Commissioner Lotner.
Yes, thank you. I think you stated that very well, because it just expands my concerns, because I think that this is a train, and the train is on the track, and that we're going to be herded into this. And, it's going to, it's going to boil down to how much input we actually have. So, what we're saying, if I understand right, is Grand Traverse County's already got committees, or a committee, or people involved in putting input in. So, we're just saying, oh, yeah, Mr. Administrator, just go work with Grand Traverse County, because they're, they got people working on it, and they got committees, and, and we haven't told him any direction. So, that's what I understand that this is going to do. So, we haven't put anybody on here that's going to work with chat, to go to these meetings, or guide, or, or any process for all of us to have input, or, or our concerns, or even the fact, do we even want to, are we serious about going forward with an authority model, or do we want a different model? So, we're saying, well, we don't know, but go ahead and work on it. I think I clearly understand the motion.
Commissioner Rush.
We've been working on this train for a year. So, this is your first opportunity to have a look at some of the work that's, that has been accomplished. We can slow this train down as slow as you want to go. The reason I am proposing that our administrator work, doesn't matter what model of governance we go with, at some point, we have to decide how the new proposal's going to look. And we have to start somewhere. Now, I'd like to take a moment and ask Mr. Baldwin if he would weigh in on this issue, as he had something I think he wanted to share with us. Maybe he can clear something up for us today while he's here.
I was going to give it back to Mr. Baldwin, once we're done here.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Is that part of the motion? In your opinion?
Yes.
It could be.
Yeah. I think it is, yes. And, were there any other comments, though, from commissioners? All right. So, I would go with that, and you can, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to let you all know, I'm still in the Christmas spirit.
You are tough. You've done this before.
I appreciate everything you're saying, and what your questions are. And I can tell you probably where this is going to end up at the end of the day. It's not my job, it's not my role to do it. You have to have these questions fully vetted out and satisfied by yourself. So, it's not that I'm avoiding answering your questions. Both your county administrator and Grand Traverse County administrator, they know you best. They know you as a board best. And they basically need to sit down, take a facilitated working session with staff, and get through some of these questions. How many board members is a central? You have a five-two division right now. Even if you did your commission governing agreement over, it's probably not going to be five-two. So, where is that? So, you can hop and pat on that. If you're playing issues, I have a good sense of what's fair and reasonable, and how, how you want to be represented. This process hasn't been conducted in a vacuum. So, you're on board, appointed three members to sit with us for the last eight months, and to come back with your recommendation, to the recommendation. They've come back with you with the recommendation, is so, let us, let the, the working staff roll their sleeves up. And, now, see what this would look like, in the details, that I, as your consultant, and I'm your consultant, because it's a two-county airport, and I, I view Lelandon and Grand Traverse as our clients, right? The airport's part of that operation. But, it's, it's not for me to say that the board should hold on to eminent domain, or it should go back to the counties. But, it is between these guys to put their heads together and think about what you would like the most with that particular issue, how you'd like to have your representation, what the qualifications should be, and where they should come from. So, we need to get to that facility, working session. It's no, there's no decision-making that occurs in that stuff. It's letting the staff work together to come to, so that as you ask these questions, which we know would be your questions, the county administrators from both counties can say, we talked about those questions, we hashed out the alternatives, here's the alternative that we hashed out. This is our recommendation, and now it's up to you as policymakers for the county to set the recommendation or modify it. I can, I believe sincerely that the effort to change the governing documents that you have today is a gargantuan, gargantuan effort to try to achieve consensus between the two counties, versus basically starting with one piece of paper and saying, let's set this thing up right. I don't have a horse in that. If you want to change the commission governing documents, start back negotiation, there's stuff in there that's hidden away that is very, very difficult to address, particularly with the property. And property, not control of property, but past practices on the property, have the city involved, and two counties involved. The FNA takes a more lenient view of dismissing those past concerns and, and forgetting them forever, because a new model needs a new airport operating, certainly they have issues with new license, and they started it, they started writing. The other method is you're going to resurrect all those wounds every single model, and you can negotiate every single model to resolution, money, ownership, whether they're properly executed, there will be title searches. So, I'm, I'm saying you can do that. I'm saying that, as Commissioner Rush said, at the end of the day, you're making your core decisions, your core decisions would be the same. How's our representation, how many, where they come from, what powers does, are we giving the airport board, what powers are we reserving for ourselves? That's really what it is. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So, we're out, we're voting on whether we're going to have chat work on this or not.
I'm just glad to hear that you know where we're going, and that we just have to follow this whole process, and we're going to get exactly where you know where we're going. So, I'm, I'm happy, happy to hear that. Thank you.
All right.
I want to make one more, one comment, because Commissioner Rush has said this has been, we've been working on this for a long time. And I understand that. And, and I think if we give it one more month, chat will have more information about what the people feel like that we represent. And, and I urge us to wait till after the holidays to do this. And, and I don't, and if, if our administrator wants to talk to, to the Grand Traverse County, he can do that. So, let's not send a message that we're going to have a decision made, and then we're going to ask for public input. It just feels awkward to me.
I'm trying to decide if, I worded my motion wrong. I was asking for this board to allow our administrator to work with this process to get answers to our questions. I'm not opposed to any sort of public input. And, I don't know if his schedule will allow that to happen this month or next month. But, the point that I'm trying to make is, when we do a public comment, or a public conversation, we don't have any answers to give them. You know? And, and that's why I'm saying, we've got to start conversation between the two owners of this airport, to come to some sort of a consensus on a model that's going to work for them, us, the airport, and the community. So, I'm just asking this board to allow that opportunity by a motion that gives our administrator the authority to seek that input that we need, so that we can make some decisions going forward. And I don't care if we don't make the decision until next December. That's not the point. It's not a train. We don't want it to be a train wreck. We want a legitimate process, so that our airport can continue to grow and flourish, and be that regional asset that people look at it as. And I don't think we should be a stumbling block.
Just, just briefly, what I would present to the public is the whys and the what. Why change it, and what needs to be changed? In that, I don't think, we don't have. We've got a great list of, of how this authority would work. So, I was, that's what I would have started with. I still don't understand exactly, what is the issue? As, as Commissioner Sorki said in the beginning, it's, it's been rolling a long time. We're, and this is, looking at, and no, if you're off our airport, we're going along fine. I can see some things that may or may not be able to do, or can or cannot do. But, why? Why, in the first place, why change anything? And if we're going to change anything, what? So, that's, that's where I would have presented it. Not, not, give us a train, hop on board.
Commissioner Redd.
But, Mr. Klein keeps raising his hand, and I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's mine, as we gave.
Go ahead. First of all, thank you all, and I appreciate all the comments. To kind of take a step or slow the process down, and maybe even offer some clarification. What is being asked, when asked for the administrators to work together, absolutely, we think, we, we work together on a daily basis, and I appreciate that. But, what, what the public process, or what the public, we'll call them public hearings, or open houses, or whatever format that they take place in, is to present the information that has been found already through the Airport Governance Committee. That's what's taking place today in Grand Traverse County, and tomorrow. So, that information is going to be presented, similar to the information you've received today, to let the public understand that. What's happening, though, is, once we present some of that information, there's a lot of other questions on what does that look like? Whether it's a commission, whether it's an authority, whether, maybe it's a new form of legislation. And we seem to get, it was represented very well today, all the different types of questions. And so, that's the one thing that we're looking to do, is to continue that dialogue, to get that answer. It's not a vote. It's not a vote for, we want an authority. It's not a vote for, we want a commission. I thank you for all the compliments on how the airport's run and how we're doing. But this is the time to look at this type of subject matter because things are going well. We're not in a dire strait where an operating agreement's expiring tomorrow. We're not at a timeline that has to be done because there's some financial crisis. We're in a good shape right now, and it's now the time we can do that without pressure. We can take our time, look at detailed information, and bring back. One of the great issues of whether you're a commission, or authority, or whatever comes at, is the debate issue. Everyone needs to get that input, and we need to have a process. And I think that's part of what the administrative work is, is to create that process. So when we do present the findings, that we can present also a process going forward and how we're looking at that. You know, obviously, when we look at the details, and that's one of the things that the administrators, I think, really need to do, is look at the details of the governance documents, look at the property map in detail to the point of, to your point, is what are the problems? The two administrators are just hearing, I'll say, the issues. Now they need to dive in and see what the problems are so that they can come back to both county commissions and identify, we have these following problems, and we recommend that they're best solved under a commission model or they're best solved under an authority model. And that's what they ask us today, is to correct that. One of the reasons we ask that question or have that direction as a vote is because of the fact that we're dealing with multiple governmental entities. And in the documents on forming the original commission, it talks about committees, it talks about, but it never finalizes what to do. It never gives us that direction of, if we have these issues, let's put a committee together. So what we're coming here is to ask the administrators to come back so we can present something to the group, so then we can have a process to go forward with. No one's asking for an authority vote. No one's asking for a permission vote. We're just asking for, let's let the administrators dig out all the issues and present that. Thank you.
So I guess I'm just having trouble here about the inconsistencies of this board. I mean, we, we changed the road commission when we actually had absolutely no problems with it. We went and added two people to it when there was, we had a really good road commission going, and I don't know that we've made it any better. Then we, we came back from the committee from early childhood, and we had to make the decision in that meeting, absolutely. And I don't understand now, the same people who, who did that, those two things, all of a sudden, they're doing the opposite. Now they're saying, "We shouldn't come out of committee, and we shouldn't make a decision, and/or it's running well and we shouldn't change it." So I just don't understand the inconsistencies here. You know, and I'm willing to wait. But this, I mean, I've been at the committees, those decisions, all these questions have been brought up. But you weren't at those committees. But yet now you're, you know, now you're saying we should wait. And I just, it's just confusing to me as, you know, how come we can be set one way and then just the opposite on the next item? You know, we can, we can, we can go with the road commission running fine, but we have to change it. And then we have early childhood, we bring it out of committee, and we have to pass it. We don't have to pass this. We don't have to change it. All they're doing is to look at it some more. So we're not making a decision here to change it. We're not making a decision to, to, to come right out of committee, and this is going to be an authority. I think people are, you're getting the idea that that's what it is. Or we're not putting a millage or changing a millage. You know, I think we're asking to let this go a little farther through committees, through staff looking at it, just as we're doing with the SAD district. We didn't make a decision to move forward with the SAD district. What we did is look at what it's going to look like. So I'd like to see a little more consistency here and that we keep this in the staff, we keep this, and not, we're not making a decision here for an authority. Commissioner Redba.
Call a question.
Yes.
I didn't get the chance to say I've been consistent, so darn it.
Right. Okay, so we have, we want to call a question. So then this will be a vote on whether we're going to call a question.
You need two people to call a question. You know, that doesn't, it comes right on its own. You need two people to call a question.
Okay, we have a support. All right, so this one is just whether we're going to call a question without any more debate. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So all right, now we're going to vote on whether we're going to allow the staff to work with Grand Travers County to decide what this authority is going to look like.
No, that's not the motion.
Nope.
You just said that it's not what this authority is going to look like.
And see, that's the problem.
Right. Right, read the motion. That's good. Thank you.
So I, adding what I think that Commissioner Rushton said from the beginning was, "Motion by Rushton to recommend the Lelandon County Board of Commissioners to allow Administrator Janik to work with the Grand Travers County to gather additional information on the airport governance models options for review by the board."
Is that fine? Is that?
That's fine.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you. Mr. Rushton and the hands jury.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, you do a no?
Five-two.
Lotner and, yeah, and Anzor, I'm sorry. All right.
Before we go, I'm ready to say thirty minutes. Jerry Coleman, could you come up here? Today is a historic day for Lelandon County, December tenth, because on December tenth, nineteen eighty, Jerry became an employee of the county. So I couldn't let that pass by. The clerk just informed me that. I would have had him during the meeting, began the meeting, but I didn't know that. So this is Jerry's thirty-ninth anniversary with the county.
Whoa.
So Jerry, thank you for all your...
Thank you. It's been an honor.
I just wanted to honor Jerry for that. Don't let that pass by.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break here, please. Come back and tell after. Call a speeding back order. The first thing I'd like to do is, we have number four A. I'd like to, if that's okay with the board, to move that forward. They have to head to Detroit here, and they'd rather do it in the daylight. So if that's... Is there any, any questions? Is that all right? We'll just move it forward.
I'm sorry. We have a consensus here, so please come forward. Matt, you want to give an update and then the president?
Yeah. We have Mr. Labelle and Mr. Anton from Verizon Wireless here to discuss the project that they have proposed for the Law Enforcement Center property. Something that we have been exploring for a while now. Brought it before the board a few times, and thought it was a good opportunity for Verizon to come here and speak to you in person. I'll let you take it over.
Great, thank you. My name is Robert Labelle. I'm attorney for Verizon Wireless. With me is David Anton, who is Site Acquisition Specialist, I guess that's your title, for Verizon. Basically, who finds sites for locations after he has provided with a search ring by our RF engineers, radio frequency engineers, who determine where we have issues with either gaps in coverage or gaps in capacity, or both. So I'm going to let you take it from here and talk a little bit about the site posing here and how it got there.
Good evening. My name is David Anton. My company is Telesight, and I find locations for cell towers for Verizon Wireless and other companies. But I started this probably over about two and a half years ago. And I tried a lot of different locations here. This wasn't the only one. Where the problem we're having is we have, we have signal south of the big hill that you have over here, and...
Which big hill?
The one right there, right up Mr. Price's property on the other side. I'm not sure if you know where that is. So we're having, we're having problems shooting to this side. And we also needed coverage on this side. So we needed a tower located. So I looked at Mr. Price's property. I looked at going on top of the hill. That didn't work out for a number of reasons. One big one was we couldn't get all our equipment up there. And then I tried this, there was Evelyn Brand Orchard, and after her husband passed away, she wasn't interested in moving forward with it also. And there was that Lelandon Township Ballfield, who was on the wrong side of the hill. That also didn't work out for us. And then Mr. Jimfries also didn't work out either. So we ended up over here for a couple of different reasons. Number one, I was trying to co-locate on your existing tower that's already here. That didn't work out because that tower is at Mex, and it will not support our Verizon equipment, which is going to be right around five thousand pounds. So I talked to Matt here to see if we could build another tower on this location and basically make it co-locatable. So once we go on there, if other carriers need to go on there and they need coverage in this area for the same reason that big hill being there, that they could do so. And the tower we proposed is going to be a hundred ninety-seven foot tower. We picked that number to keep it under two hundred so we don't have to light it. You're not going to have a flashing beam on top. And then also we made it co-locatable. It's going to be galvanized steel, so that tower is not going to rust. Basically, that seemed to be the best color for a tower. It kind of fades into the Michigan gray skies usually. And so, and we've tried painting them white and blue, but that stuck out more than the galvanized steel did. We're going to have a compound on the ground next to that tower. It's going to be sixty feet long by...
Twenty.
Twenty feet wide. And inside there is going to be Verizon Tower. Also, it's going to be Verizon equipment and a propane tank with a backup generator.
Excellent. Sixty-six by twenty.
Yeah. So the reason for all that is, once we have that equipment in there, it also plays into the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Once that, something happens where you lose all your power here, the backup generator will kick in, so everybody's going to, still going to be able to use their phones for nine-one-one emergency, contact loved ones or friends, or trying to figure out what's going on. So that'd be a good thing to have way up here. And inside that compound, or right there, we're going to have the driveway going right to it. So, and you could pretty much do anything around the compound. We just need access to that compound so we can get in there, in and out. We're only going to visit it maybe once or twice a month. So there's not going to be heavy traffic at all going in and out of that compound. And everything, all the, all the wires, electrical wires going to it is all going to be buried underground. You're not going to have anything overhead. This tower is called a self-support tower. You're not going to have guide wires coming off of it. It's going to support itself. And these towers are built very, very strong where they won't come down. They've gone through hurricanes, tornadoes, and everything else, basically. And if they do collapse, they don't collapse like a tree. They pretty much bend right on themselves. They just re-plant it to themselves and just stay there, basically, till we come back and fix them. The most that could happen is maybe antennas get kind of pushed around with the wind, and that's about it. They don't fly out there. They're pretty, pretty well connected. And that's pretty much everything I have to say about the tower unless you have any other questions.
I'll give you a couple of pieces of background too, as well. Part of our rationale for what we do here is that we have obligations under our licenses from the FCC to provide coverage throughout, you know, make a solid map of coverage in all locations in which there is a demand. This is an area of significant demand. As you can tell from the search that David went through, it takes a while to try to find one. You folks ultimately, you know, we're also leasing the actual property from you folks as well. But in addition, we're going to have approvals, zoning approvals to get from you folks as well for that purpose. And that you're one of twenty-four agencies that we have to get for every single tower to get approved. There's a variety, and we have to go through this. But ultimately, you know, we've got to get all twenty-four. Some of those approvals are from the same, same, same agency, but it's twenty-four. And part of the reason why we do this is not only because of our FCC licenses, but because of some, frankly, realities of current living. Ninety-three percent of all calls to nine-one-one come from cell phones, which is not terribly surprising because that's what you have on hand when you're outside on your homes where the emergency occurs. On top of that, as of December two years ago, the cell phone became the primary means of communication in America, phone communication. More people have a cell phone only than have a landline at all. So as a result, now it's the way we communicate now. And as a result of these cell towers, which, you know, are a single unit as opposed to thirty, forty telephone poles to be able to connect things from one site to another, this allows for, you know, a single structure for purposes of handling not only our own as Verizon Wireless, but also all the individual other carriers, AT&amp;T, Sprint, whoever. As we are required by federal law, the licenses that we get are pursuant to federal law. And that same federal law requires us all to play nice in the same sandbox. We all have to be, we have to allow each other on each other's towers. We cannot say no. So we have to build these also that they're capable of being able to support other carriers. In this case, taking a look at the nodes on here, it looks like we can support up to three additional carriers in addition to ourselves.
Commissioner Anzor.
Two questions. There will be absolutely no interference with our emergency broadcast or reception.
No. Unequivocally, we can state that the FCC exists primarily to prevent that kind of frequency overlap.
They're just so close, I want to make sure that there will not be any degradation. And then the second thing, during construction, will you need to close down access on this road?
No. Okay.
Mr. Labelle.
I'd kind of like to say you lost me at FCC because since this last big antenna upgrade where you have to rescan your televisions, now we have no television. So I've kind of lost all faith in the FCC. So you say you can co-locate other people. So Verizon would make revenue off of our tower, up to three, did you say?
Up to additional three. But the revenue is frankly negligible. All of us, because of the obligations we have under the federal law to be able to put each other on each other's towers, nobody wanted to really, you know, put it to any other party. So, because it would just come where around it, like done later. So as a result, we all have master leasing agreements with each other, which provide for rental income, or rentals for these sites that extremely low between each other. It was actually identified that if you were building this tower for the purpose of making money, if you got four carriers on it instantaneously, all four of them put their cars on the exact same day, it would be fifteen years later that you would break even at that point.
Faster than solar panels.
Well, yeah, in that circumstance, but that's the point in that case is whether you're breaking even as an investor personally. If you're trying to make money off of a tower, nobody could invest in something that, that doesn't make you money for fifteen years. So we are not doing this to make money at all. We are doing this in order to be able to get our transmission lines out there.
So you mentioned that some different pieces of private property because this, I believe, is what we asked you to do a couple of months ago, is look at some private pieces first?
Oh, I've done that two years ago, two and a half years ago.
Did you do it in the last couple of months?
Last couple of months, I looked at other things too. I looked at, I talked to, actually, not even the last couple of months. I already did all my due diligence. I talked to the winery and asked them if I could build a tower on their property, and they said that they were not interested. And basically, that's pretty much, I only have so many shots at this because of that big hill there. So I have to be east of the hill, but not too far east because there's another tower, I think, three, four miles to the east of us. So these, when I get a, when I, when I receive a map from our RF engineer, there, I only have so much leeway. So in other words, if you're asking me to find a piece of property a mile, two miles down the line, that's not going to work either. So I look at what the RF engineer gives me, and I try to find the best location for that tower, not to basically make the neighbors upset or anything like that. And the other thing I look at is being up here, it's so beautiful, that when you're, when you're looking out there, you want to see basically the sky, the trees, and all that stuff. So when you're pretty much putting the tower next to another tower that's there, I'm not... So when you're pretty much putting the tower next to another tower that's there, I'm not changing the way the location looks, it's still going to see a tower, but if you look everywhere else, there's not going to be a tower there. So I look at that also, I also look at the neighbors, I look at a lot of different things.
But about 200 feet west of here, southwest of here, there's a higher hill. And so this neighbor you spoke with, right here?
And that's the winery.
This is a winery right over here?
Yeah.
Winery over here too? So this one didn't mind?
Well, and also, I just want to add that, I also looked at the elevation of the areas around here, and where I'm at is actually a very nice elevation too, it's way up there, it's almost, almost as high as that hill, basically, believe it or not.
And did you look at the hill behind the County Dinsfield Building?
Yes, I did, and the RF engineers did not basically-
Okay.
Said that, you mean the hill back here?
No.
Where?
West of here.
West of here, yeah, I did look at that one. In fact, there was a couple, there was a couple of hills going that way. And they were too far to the west. We needed to be a little bit more east to try to connect with the tower depths to the south.
Well, you tried to answer my question, because that was the direction a couple of months ago, was to, because I would prefer to have this be on a piece of private property, have that revenue opportunity to one of our taxpayers, rather than-
Well, I checked around, and pretty much, I did look at other properties, and this is why I came up with-
When you put public notice in our paper a month ago, soliciting public input on this tower, on historic property, it said, was that this piece?
No idea.
No.
It's definitely not the piece here, I mean, this isn't historic property.
What piece was that then?
We don't-
I have no idea.
It could have been one of our competitors, I don't, I don't know.
I believe it was Verizon.
If it was, we don't, we, he and I were involved in it.
Oh, it was AT-
Yeah, it was, it was over on the hand of-
Okay, all right, good, thank you. He said it was AT&amp;T that did-
Oh, okay.
Okay, and then, the $14,000 annual, how is that determined, and where does it fall in line with?
Sorry, I'm missing the question, you're talking about the rent under the lease?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The lease or rental that's set up right now is 13,200, and increases by 10% per term. You're probably looking at the first, you were probably looking at the first extended term, when you got the $14,000.
14,000, yes.
Yeah, that's from the first extended term, that would be five years from now. The first, the first term is 13,200, it's in section 4A1. That's 13,200 to start with, and then in 4A2, you get the first renewal terms of 14,520, and then so, and so on. It's determined the same way as any other thing, we do negotiations with parties. I find it interesting you wanted us to go to a private party first.
I'm sorry, let me back up. So we, we, I don't think we've gotten all of that in front of us, so-
We don't have a contract.
No. That must be-
But what we have been told is the current proposal is starting, starting at an annual lease of 14,520, is that correct?
Matt? That is the current version that I had in between the lawyers.
That's-
So now it's less?
No, that was, it was never 14,520 to start with.
What is it, to start?
It's 13,200.
So it is less?
So it is less, yes.
Matt, where did you get that?
I got that from our attorney.
And another thing you have, along with the leases, if anybody else that wants to come co-locate on that tower, they would have to come to you and lease more ground space. So there'd be more, other carriers would be paying you lease to go on that same tower.
Let me try to go through this a little bit.
And pay you also, so they pay both?
Well, they're, yeah.
They pay us for the tower.
They're going to pay us for the tower use, it's going to cost us about $600,000 to put this tower up. So, and then, there's no money coming out of your pocket, we're going to, we're going to put in all the money ourselves, to build this tower.
Let me, let me suggest what-
Excuse me, let me just clarify, so we all on the same page. We haven't proposed contract yet, we're not asking you to approve a contract or anything. What Matt and I are simply asking for, if you wish for us to proceed and enter into negotiations, and have our attorneys draw up a contract. Because this is just the first stage, and we do not have a contract that we have agreed to, or we have proposed to, or that our attorneys look at.
Well, my final comments, and really have nothing to do with Verizon, and my, my final comments that I have on this, is that I'm, I'm opposed to us putting another tower on for anyone other than our necessary business at, at this county, on this campus. Because it is a beautiful campus, and, but beside that, I'm not sure we want to go down that road of, of leasing out parcels on this property for businesses outside of county government. We don't have a policy on it, we don't have a precedence on it, we, you know, so, so if we approve this before we have a policy in place, and we talked about this, I think, two months ago, and we still are here, at, at this level right now, of unknown, but if somebody comes next month and wants to put a coffee shop down across the drive from the Veterans Center, we've got nothing, we've got nothing to say, except, well, I guess we did allow another business to come on our property. We should have a process in place.
If I could address that, okay, first thing.
I don't know if you can.
I can. Many, many counties have, have these facilities on their, on their, on their property, many.
I'm sure.
Throughout Michigan. It is something that you're enabled pursuant to state law to do.
I'm not saying it's not legal. I'm talking about our policy with our campus.
Okay, what I'm trying to say in connection with it, is that what you're, what you're, what you're providing here, is not saying, hey, any private business, come on in here, know what we do. We are the current, currently, cell phones are the main reason we, to telephone services, it is an essential service, even as it is defined as essential service.
Coffee is an essential service for a-
No, I mean, let's, let's get, you know, realistic. Yeah, it is a cell phone service. Ninety-three percent of all these cell phone calls are coming from 911.
I'm not arguing that, I did that.
It's all related to a public service.
But that is, that is your business, and that is not-
Agreed. But what I'm saying is there's a significant difference between, there's a significant difference between us and a coffee shop. You could clearly say no to a coffee shop if you said yes to us. I don't see any reason why you couldn't do that of a public reason.
Well, you have many county policies, county government then, because I'm not going to argue with you about policy, but that does open a door for something here by doing this, without a policy in place. That's how county government operates, there's no other way around it.
Other counties would probably not have that.
I disagree.
Mayor, mayor, well, you can, or you can't, but, but-
But at the top of that, just to go a little further into this, at one point, you talked about a grid seat on private property. That is almost the exact opposite of almost every county we've ever seen. And the rationale why is because that means the revenue that's coming from essentially a public service, in this case, is going to a single individual within the county, one voter, as opposed to going to the county, where it goes to benefit all the voters of that county. That's the reason why it tends to be more often that you see, you see ordinances, actually try to tell you that the preferred locations are county, you know, county, a county ordinance will be county, or if it's a township, it will be a township property. So from that standpoint, we would end up doing something like that. What I'm, all I'm trying to say here, in terms of us doing this, is that this is a very common procedure among counties and other municipalities, for purposes of getting into this. And the revenue that you're talking about coming into you, in this case, is also very consistent with what it was other counties. And is also something that will go to benefit of the whole of the county, as opposed to a single individual.
There's been a number of communication towers put on, usually it's on large chunks of farmland. That has been, like, a source of farmland preservation for those people. And that's where I would have, I would have rather seen this go, as you said, we want taxpayer, but it can pay all of their taxes, and even more, that-
But let me, let me point out one other thing, it was just mentioned a moment ago, about how we locate one of these. Individual, the reason why they're called cell towers, is because each of the towers creates a cell around it, roughly circular, of coverage. Those cells have to fit together with each other, it's like a honeycomb. They can't significantly overlap, because if they overlap, the area of, overlap is an area of interference. The signal actually degrades within that area because of that. And you can't have a significant gap between them, because now that gap is permanent. You can't put a tower in the middle of it, because that would create massive amounts of interference. So there's a very small search ring. Even though the towers are going to be miles apart from each other, you can't go miles and miles away to go and find a new tower. You've got to find it in a location in which it is best able to provide that honeycomb, and this flat area of coverage throughout the area, throughout the area, including this, this county. So that's why, in this particular case, not only do we have that issue to deal with, we've got this hill, which is busy blocking signals from being able to go across it. So that on top of it, creates greater, greater pressure for where we can place this. So you've got, you know, we tried private individuals first, and all of them either had some physical difficulty, located on the wrong side of the hill, for example, or we couldn't get equipment up the side of the hill because it was too steep, or it had problems with regard to the location vis, vis of the, the coverage zones that you wanted to try to establish. So that's our rationale for coming up with these things.
Not entirely, I've been on you before.
Okay, Commissioner Antone?
The paperwork we have evidently is not what is being discussed verbally.
That's-
And it sounds like you're still in negotiation.
We are still in negotiation.
Why are we being, why should we approve something that's still under negotiation?
You're not being asked to approve anything tonight.
No.
Or today. The only reason we're here is in order to try to figure out whether Mrs. Lotner's position, that there's no way that she's putting up a tower here, is the position of the whole board, because then we've got to move on.
Yeah, let me just clarify that one, because Matt came, I think, three months ago, gave an update, we came maybe six months ago with the concept, Matt came, probably three months ago, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it was October, so two, three months.
Two months ago.
Yeah, two months ago.
Since that, the dialogues continue, we have no contract, we have no proposal, we're not asking to vote anything, but we certainly want to know whether we should continue to have dialogue. I think Verizon would like to know, Matt and I would like to know, that came, well, Matt, Matt can address that, this is EBS.
You know, it's asking us to-
Sign a lease.
Sign the land lease agreement, you know, that's what this says.
Well-
Pending approval.
Wow, pending approval.
We're not asking you to-
Okay, listen.
Sign the lease agreement, Tom.
No, you're not-
I'm not throwing Matt out of the bus, but that's not what my purpose today was, is you're on my update, I said we want to have dialogue today, you're not being asked to vote on any contract to approve any motions. If you wish to continue this dialogue, Matt and I will work with our legal counsel to draft up a contract. If you choose not to pursue it, then it doesn't make sense for us to spend our time, or their time, to have entered into negotiations and have our legal counsel involved.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Commissioner Antone?
Matt, would you agree with-
I do agree.
That maybe we're a little too anxious with your motion?
Yeah, I put a lot of information in.
If you're interested, you draft an motion.
Okay, so, my understanding is, we're just approving the concept that we would put a tower here, if we can come to an agreement.
We just want to know if you want to even pursue this dialogue.
Do we want a tower on this campus?
No, I just want to add one thing. I drive the location, and I'm on my phone, and I try to figure out exactly what's going on in the area, and I could tell you that when I'm driving up here, I turn on my navigation, and I dropped it somewhere down there, south of here where I lose, I lose connection, I can tell you that when I'm trying to make a call from the Leland Ballfield, my call's going to go through. So what I'm saying is the service is needed up there, up here, along with the 911, along with the navigation, that this tower's going to provide, health, safety, welfare of the community, okay? So you may not like the tower here, but towers are needed nowadays just for that purpose, alone.
Go somewhere and focus.
Okay, Commissioner Antone, you have the floor.
You have exhausted the other opportunities within this footprint, that you have to do something.
Correct.
You have exhausted the other possibilities, and this is the remaining choice.
This is where I'm at. And please believe me, I can get a lot better lease deal from a farmer than I can get from you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, show us a little.
Thank you. First off, thank you for coming today and being available to have questions asked. We talked a little bit about co-location, and you were saying a few more things about it here, in terms of, I'm assuming, when you say you have lease arrangements, it's with other cellular companies.
Yes, AT&amp;T, all those other folks.
What about, because I have actually two questions, what about internet service providers?
We don't have, with the majority of them, we do not have existing master lease agreements, so it would end up having to be a separate negotiation.
Would your, are your rates, since they're stationary and can only serve the audience that they signed a contract with, unlike a mobile customer?
Yeah.
Are your rates going to be comparable to what you would provide for other cellular partners, or would you be looking at giving them a little bit of a break?
Okay, so, let's break up that, what you just talked about, into two broad categories. Public service internet, like for example, that what should be done through a 911 emergency service, or something like that, or to have communication between your, your first responders, to have them to be able to have that communication, that's free. We will let you take on, put your, you know, put your equipment for that purpose on our towers, absolutely free of charge, it's a laser space.
Right.
The second category, broad category, would be everything else, you know, related to internet. And that's, you know, a pro, for-profit industry.
Right.
So at that circumstance, it would be, it would be negotiating with them for, at price. I think we're competitive, I guess. To tell you the truth, I don't do that very much, so I'm not sure what our prices are that we actually charge. I would assume that we're competitive, because it's not, you know, like I said already, we don't put up towers in order to be able to make profits off of the, off of the rentals we charge the people, because it's, it's not, it wouldn't be worth it to do it, as a result. So we put up towers to get ourselves at the top of the tower, and get the best broadcast signal.
My second question relates to capacity. And Mr. Anton is exactly correct, there are parts in this county that cellular service is, to say it's not good would be an understatement. How enhanced would your broadcast capabilities be, in terms of reaching or improving service for people who have Verizon telephones? Like, are you going to go as far as Leland, are you going to Sunset Bay, how far south? Do you have any sense of what your broadcast capability would be in terms of enhancement?
That all has to do with the terrain, and the hill, and things like that.
Yeah, I realize that.
Because the signal's on top, and it shoots this way, it doesn't shoot up. And it's usually at, at the height that we're asking, at the elevation we're asking, depending on the terrain, it should, it should shoot out about two and a half, two, three miles. Antennas are getting better, and they're shooting out further, and nothing's going to do, it may also reach the, the lake too, so if there's anybody out there cruising around in their boats-
It actually-
They'll be able to use the, yeah, it really bounces a lot when there's nothing in the way.
Yeah, it goes a little further on the lake surface, because-
So if there's anybody out there on, on the lake, and they're in trouble, they could use their cell phone to contact people, that could also work out too for them, so.
What we'll have at the time of the zoning, that is something we call a propagation map. It will show all the existing towers and where they cover currently, and then it will have on top of that, show the model for what this one's going to do. And we've been refining this model for 20 years, so we know exactly.
That's what I-
The model's very good, it'll, it'll, it'll show where it's actually going to go. And it takes into account that model, the terrain, for example, this hill.
Right.
And trying to figure out what it's going to be doing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would, would add that, you know, given our state of cellular service in this county, I would very much encourage exploring a relationship with Verizon on a new tower.
Commissioner Lawner?
Is AT&amp;T on our tower?
Not this one, in the government center.
So we've got no other cellular towers?
Not on this property.
How many self, cell companies are there that serve Leland County, do you know?
Oh, we got AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint. If you have someone like T-Mobile, they utilize other people's antennas, but I couldn't tell you off the top.
So three put up their own antennas?
What's that?
Three generally put up their own antennas?
Yes.
No, that's untrue. Generally, what will happen, and what we've seen, is that we get there first, we put up our towers, and we do all the capital improvements necessary, and then the other parties co-locate our towers and we do all the capital improvements necessary, and then the other parties co-locate on ours. To tell you the truth, it's been their business decision to do that. They'll agree to go a little bit lower so they don't have to spend as much money as we would have to spend to be able to do this. But we've made the business decision that it's more important to get on the top of that tower and have the better, better broadcast range as a result. But that generally what will happen is they'll go on that. They will not build their own towers. Your own ordinance doesn't prevent it anyhow. You can't, you can't build a tower under your ordinance unless you show you can't co-locate on something that's available. And that would have been this tower that's over here already, but that one is structured and not capable of handling our equipment, or anybody else's for that matter.
Any other questions? We need a motion? We do, if we're going to. Commissioner Antone.
I would move to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize the Administrator to continue the land lease agreement between Leland County Verizon Wireless to locate a tower on the campus.
Second.
Any other questions? Proceed.
I just have a statement and I, I think there's someplace out there. Honestly, there's got to be another piece that would work. This county is made up of hills and valleys and I would rather you go back and work harder on Mr. Price's property and...
That's not gonna work. I already tried.
Somehow they get up there because I see structures at the top of that hill, so...
I would have been there.
Excuse me. I thought I had the floor, but, okay, my yield currently.
Yes, Commissioner West.
Question for Matt. I understand our existing tower can't take any more equipment now. Is there a way to improve our existing tower so that we could add their equipment on that instead of putting up another tower?
In order to improve that tower, it's gonna take substantial foundational improvements. So that tower would almost have to come down in order to improve the foundation and...
It would have to be a drop and swap.
Yeah.
That's how we normally do those things.
It would be very expensive and it would be a lot of work.
Thank you.
But there's your negotiations, Matt.
Commissioner Rush.
If for some reason, Matt, we had to take our equipment off that tower, would we be able to access this particular tower?
Yes.
And, and at what cost to us?
Depends on what you're moving out of. Like I told, like I said, it's 911 broadcasting equipment or it's trying to, you know, prove communication between your first responders, it's free.
Is that what we have on that tower?
Yeah, the radio equipment that we have on our tower would be not for a 911 purpose. The ISP that's on that tower right now, that would not be included.
I would, I would caution one thing. We wouldn't charge you any rent, but you'd have to pay for your own equipment and, you know, put it on there and the installation of equipment, et cetera, but we wouldn't charge rent.
Okay. One last question, it's for our sheriff, if I may. Do you have a problem with the additional traffic up there on that road and in that area in relation to the law enforcement center?
In terms of while it's being constructed or...
Ongoing. Or in construction.
I don't know that, I've checked with Verizon guys, I don't know that other than building the tower, you're getting rid of some traffic, occasional maintenance, just to make sure.
Yeah, we do it once or twice a month, we'll send somebody else to check out the antennas.
They still can't come in our parking lot, there's plenty of them back, you know, emergency management back by the coal buildings.
Yeah, that's already reflected, actually, on the lease. Your attorney already reflected the fact that you had to keep that secure, so we already got that.
And we come with just a, it's a regular truck or van and we would pull it up right into that driveway, so it would be out of the way. And where we're building that tower is pretty much out of the way also, just to the side.
I just wanted to know if our sheriff would have a concern.
Well, I appreciate that and I'm also very concerned about our lack of coverage on waters discussed. We have water gaps and we pull out of our office, I'm preparing to set a drive out to 204, we need to drop cell phone calls right there a lot of times during the midst of emergency. So I think it's very important to give the tower and I don't think it would negatively affect our office.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna say, we, our tower was located so it was out of sight. You pull up through this campus, you don't even know we've got a tower over there. We put it out of sight. And now this would slap a 197-foot tower there for, for half our employees to look at all day long.
Yeah, I just want to add, that's how I find this location. When I'm driving up, I could see the tower. And that's how I pull up right here, I know where it is, so it's not hidden.
As outside as we could put it.
As we are too.
Yes.
No, that's right there.
Go ahead.
Is there some way that we can beautify the tower area?
We can put landscaping around it in order to be able to limit the...
Yeah, you won't see inside the compound. Yeah, I mean, of course we can't hide the tower, but we could hide what's inside the compound, we'll put vegetation like evergreens all the way around it except for where we pull up.
And maybe our...
We could put it in our contract.
If there's a consensus for that, maybe the Administrator can work out the details with you.
It's not a comment, that kind of thing comes up for planning, planning and zoning anyhow, so...
Okay, so, is there any other questions here? Okay, so all of those understand that just voting that they continue negotiations? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes five to two.
Can you move the second row?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you getting us up a little sooner. We've now got a quick ride to get back down there for our next hearing.
Sorry. That's not a problem. It's number two.
Number two. Sheriff's Establishment of Marine Division Donation Line item.
I'll say good morning to the board for a couple minutes here before we switch to afternoon.
Ready.
We just read out the EDS, I guess clearest way to do it. The Leland County Sheriff's Office is requesting permission to raise private funds for the Marine Safety Division for the purpose of purchasing large capital items such as updated watercraft. The goal would be to raise funds to purchase a Great Lakes-capable patrol boat or if this amount was not able to be raised, to replace one or more of the aging LCSO patrol boat fleet. Funds raised will be placed in the LCSO Marine Safety Division Equipment Fund, account number 331.727.005. With no existing plan in place to repair or replace our patrol boats, the age of the existing fleet at the end of the 2020 season, which we're going into, will be as follows. We have a 1991 Boston Whaler Outrage 17-foot boat, this vessel is 30 years old. We have a 1995 Four Winds Coast Runner 20-foot boat, this vessel is 26 years old. We have a 2001 Tiara Pursuit 25-foot boat, this vessel is 20 years old. We have a 2008 Walcraft Coastal 25-foot boat, this vessel's 13 years old. That is the one that is currently stationed in Leland and it is not Great Lakes-capable in any realistic terms. And number five, the last boat, 2011, we have a Boston Whaler 15-foot boat, this vessel is 10 years old. So the actual suggested recommendation would be to allow the sheriff's office to begin a campaign to raise funds to be placed in the LCSO Marine Safety Division Donation Line, account number 331.727.005, for the purchase of a patrol boat and/or associated equipment for the Marine Safety Division. And this request is based on our going 0-for-4 since 2015, where I'm trying to draw funds for the county from the federal homeland security, port security grant. And the last time they sent money north of the line from Chicago to Port Huron was about six years ago. They're trying to, as I brought up before in previous years, they're trying to replace boats that have been damaged in Mississippi, Louisiana, and Florida with all the hurricanes, the Carolinas, the Outer Banks, so forth. And in keeping that up, they're just now spending money up in this region, northern areas. So being realistic, I think I could go to private sources and raise the vast majority of the money. If we're unable to reach the total amount, which the boat has specked out as $472,000, then I may come back to board at a later date and say we're $50,000 short or $100,000 short, whatever. But I'm trying to raise that privately, so it's not a burden to the county. I do know that we have a lot of very supportive and anxious donors in the region who have said to me, if you need anything, come to us. So I'd ask for your permission to start that. And how this changes from the past request, last, could we have a private match grant? That was based on the 75-25 model where federal homeland security pays 75% of a grant and the county pays 25. And we were looking at the county paying approximately up to $125,000 under that model. In this particular model, the vast majority of this would be raised up through private funds.
Mr. Lotner.
I'm going to make the motion. Sheriff has already read off the motion, but I make the motion? I'll support.
Did you just speak to it?
So, well, first of all, I guess we'll make sure that we've got everything in order on our end as far as being allowed to do this, open up this, if this is the right line item to do it, et cetera. We'll do all that. The idea is, should you continue to write for, oh, yes, they can...
It already exists.
Okay, so this is, this is the line item and it's all, so if we have this...
There's a line item revenue already exists, it's in the 2020, it's in the current budget.
So if people, if this pass is Tuesday night, somebody can walk in Wednesday morning and write a check to whatever and...
After you have your board rules that you have to approve that donation if it's over $500.
But they can write, get it to us when we...
But yeah, we have a policy in place.
Okay.
So one of the things, Commissioner, that's a good point about the $500. Realistically, some people are gonna donate a thousand, we're hoping some people a lot more than that. Rather than come to the board every month and ask, can we accept free money? That's what I'm sort of looking for, is an overview. I'd like to set this up with your understanding that that money would go, that's not to buy patrol cars or pay for wages or anything like that. It would be very cumbersome if we, say, had 300 donations of $500 or more to continue to come to the board and ask for permission. Is there a way to work around that?
Okay, so my question is, this, this could go towards our match. If you continue to write the grant for that, that boat and if you're successful, we would have in the donation line item, our match. Is that kind of your idea? Or eventually, if you get enough, just buy the boat?
Just get enough to buy the boat privately, but let's say we only raised $125,000 and a year or two from now, or even this year, I was successful with a federal match grant. That would be ideal because that money in that federal fund has already come from all of our tax dollars. So we've already been taxed, it goes to federal, there's a $100 million account every year set aside for homeland security. So by my requesting ad, I'm tapping into what we've already paid in substantially high taxes from this area. We're a high tax area up here. We have a lot of lakefront property and, you know, there's a lot of taxes being paid in this region. So I think it's perfectly reasonable to continue to apply for that grant. And if we were able to raise the money privately, fine. I personally know people who'd probably write a check for it. But the truth of the matter is, I would expect this to offset the county cost, if at all possible, as much as possible.
Commissioner Sosa.
I think Sheriff Barkovich, you were asking a question on process and you're very graciously trying to conserve our time. However, I think, I'm checking with you, Jen, but I think every donation would have to come in, you could probably do them at, in a long...
Yeah, let me, just, we do have a policy in place. I think we need to sustain that policy. You could, let's say he gets 301,000. We would simply produce a list of that 300, if it passed one motion accepting all the donations.
That would work. That'd be fun.
But it'd have to all come.
You know, just so, if someone donates, it will be public information.
Right.
Because that was the question that was asked, can we make a motion on private? The answer is no.
Thanks, I just knew that you hadn't quite given the answer to that.
But we can deal with that internally. That's an internal thing.
And I do have one question pertaining to that, Commissioner Janik. The, let's say a person would like to just write a check for it, or an entity, you know, a foundation or something. If they wanted to remain anonymous, would they be allowed to do it?
No, it's public information. We ask that question with your counsel.
Okay.
Commissioner Rush.
There are alternatives. Okay.
Yes, yes.
The way this is written, this is just specifically for capital purchases.
That's correct.
It will not be for repairs on marine items, the way this is written.
The way this is written, as they put, purchase of patrol boat associated equipment. However, let's say that that fund had money in it. All right, let me go way back. This board, not you individually, but this county has not purchased a patrol boat since 1972, okay? Bombing of Hyphong Harbor, Operation Arc Light in Vietnam, President Nixon. So we're going historically way back. And what I would like to do is establish this Marine Safety Fund as our safety net, our catch-all. So let's say we raised more than it was enough to buy the boat, if we had to repair something. If we had to repair something, that would be absolutely awesome to have it privately funded or through donations rather than coming back to you and saying, hey, we have a repair or something. But it is not for wages.
Okay, so that was the distinction. If we pass this as it is, um...
I think I can clarify that. I think I'm gonna say, if you pass it, it gives an ability to raise the money after donations. Once it's accepted by the county, it becomes county money, you have to approve the purchase and it's go through same policy procedures to purchase any...
Whether it be a capital improvement or a repair.
Anything over $2,000.
Okay. And that's what I want a clarification for.
So you still have to follow the policy.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Okay, so this isn't a special fund?
It is not?
This is not a special fund.
Okay, that's what I want a clarification on.
Donations, when they did the GoFundMe, you can't have it in a separate fund. This is general fund.
Okay.
It's a general fund revenue that already exists. It's called marine donations, it's in your budget books.
Yeah.
Those marine donations that have come in, they are using for currently, right now, if they wanted to purchase anything they want, up to the elected official's approval. So if you wanted to specialize this, then I would create a second line item in his budget, so it's in the sheriff's marine budget. The first one would say donated items, the second one would say capital improvement donations. Those would be donations specifically for boat capital purchases. So if you wanted to, then by board motion, if you wanted me to move that to a repair line item, which would be the one that either above or below, however you want me, however I would set that up, that would be for him to come to the board and ask for those donations to be moved. You know what I'm saying? So if it's, if it's specific for a capital purchase and you want to do it that way, you are more than welcome to. I can split that up. Preferably, if it was me, that I would put it into one line item and the sheriff has control over that one line item. And that's the line item on the expense that he's asking you for. So this number that he's giving you is his marine donation expense line item. And it encompasses everything.
Okay.
In the Marine Division.
I wanted to be clear on that.
So that, that would be your clarification for your motion.
Yeah, okay.
But for example, the sheriff could not go and take that money and spend $50,000 on something. Not that he would, but just...
You have a form.
Once someone is accepted, it's counted on, that's a follow county policies procedures, as any funds would. So if you allocate him $50,000 versus someone donating $50,000, it still has to follow county proper, proper procedure.
You know, the purpose, there's not a long-term management plan. We don't have a long-term fund established away, you know, we keep having to come here and put a Band-Aid on a six-stitch wound, you know, hey, we broke a motor, this, I'm trying to be proactive. I'm not gonna be sheriff here too much longer and after, I'm not sheriff, it'd be nice to know we had a way to establish a fund and we could fund things. I mean, you need something when you need it. And I'll go back just a few weeks ago to the 28th of October, 13:39 hours, 1:39 afternoon. I'm at the Glen Lake Fire Department meeting with Chief Ferguson. And we're talking and a call came out that a guy put a knife through his arm between his radius and ulna, out the other side of his arm, and he's basically potentially bleeding to death. Cut his radial artery. This situation required immediate response out to the lake. We had a situation where the chief and I talked about it, dispatch called, we end up getting, make a decision. We took the fire boat from Glen Harbor all the way up to Leland to launch it. Okay, Glen Harbor, their equipment is set up to launch in Glen Harbor. We had to switch equipment, a bigger truck to take it all the way up to Leland. Makes sense, that big storm, that big blow we had when it blew out the parking lots down there. It, there were trees stacked up everywhere and the boat launch in Glen Harbor, which is not a protected harbor like Leland, was basically destroyed. So we had to haul that boat up there. That call came out at 13:29, or 13:39 hours. I went out in the boat with Chief Ferguson, EMTs, paramedics. We got the guy a tourniquet on. You can lose your arm with a tourniquet. You can bleed to death, cut the radial artery. We went out along with National Park Service and DNR, along with the help of Leland Fire, who met us at the marina to take him to hospital for surgery. We went out, got him, brought him back on the boat in the seas and got him in. It was almost five o'clock in the afternoon by the time we got back. We don't always have time for things like that with heart attacks, with strokes, things like that. And we really need that Great Lakes boat in the water. So being that there's not overall long-term plan, we've gone a long time without a Great Lakes class patrol boat. That's why I wanted to establish this. So it isn't a county burden, so we don't have to come here and keep, you know, putting Band-Aids on fixes that need a larger fix.
Any other questions? Commissioner Reddick.
Well, you just said we need a way to fund the marine division. And I don't see having a fundraiser or a private donation as being a way to solve the county's problems in this area. And I think that we need to, you know, plan for purchase of a boat, you know, and build it into the budget if it takes, you know, several years to develop. But I personally don't see that putting out a fundraiser for everything that we, you know, need is necessarily the way to go.
It's tough. And I totally agree with you, Commissioner, because, you know, the situation, I know we got hit with the heating and cooling issue at the sheriff's building. And then we got hit with a leaking roof. And you guys got hit with a roof replacement over here, as well as now, as we heard this morning, you have an entire heating and cooling system being rebuilt. This county has spent several million dollars the last few years just trying to play catch-up, keep the existing infrastructure in place. It's a bad time for me, a sheriff, to ask for a boat, truthfully. And I understand and know that. I've tried to be sensible about that. So that's why I'm trying to find the private fundraising. But I do think that not being able to raise that down the road, that's something we should look at. I mean, it's a reality. You look at the pictures on the wall. This is a magnificent place. Everyone seems to, you know, be planning in life to retire here someday and enjoy this. And we're very water recreation oriented. But the reality is, we had, and I produced prior figures for you, how many tens of millions of pounds of cargo goes through international freighters that has homeland security issues? We have caustic chemicals. We have people using the Manitowoc Ferry and, you know, the ferries going back and forth, not Manitowoc, the Manitou Island Ferry. They're making several trips a day to the islands. You have the Mackinac to Corderon Race and vice versa. You have recreational stuff. Plus, we have a population of three of our four islands. And we have homeland security issue. We have a safety issue. We have a rescue issue, along with general patrol. You know, I was out, it was last year or year before last, we pulled the body out of Lake Michigan, the unknown person. I was on that boat as well. And, you know, we're out, we're sharing a lot of these responsibilities with the Coast Guard.
Well, I think you got a little away from my point. I'm not saying that we don't need a boat and I, you know, I understand all the reasons why you do, but I'm just talking about the method of funding it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, have you applied for a 2% grant and have the tribe be a partner in the purchase of this boat?
We have it for that because the, as all grants, and we apply for 2% grants, we've used that for things like coronary breath testing devices, tourniquets, more smaller items, if you will. And this is large capital.
Well, and there are other grant opportunities out there for large capital items. And I'm just wondering if you've applied to any of the others for any of those?
No, the one that makes the most sense is obviously the Port Authority, the Port Security Grant, because that's specifically for that need. There are other options, and I'm open, you know, however we can get that boat in the marina, I'm good with it. If there's other options someone knows about. The 2%, just, I don't know what the total pie is annually of 2%, but it's, it's basically argued for by many different entities. Everybody wants a piece of it. It's tough to ask them for a large sum of money. I haven't taken that route, not beyond it, certainly, especially with guidance or ideas. If you folks have ideas of a way to raise money, I'm more than willing to. Trying to help county out, so how it works, I'm open-minded to.
I would just prefer to go that method, you know, applying for grants for everything, private fundraiser, just for.
I know when Glen Lake, your territory, when they, they had a private entity purchase their boat for them, and they have a wonderful fire boat there. Unfortunately, you know, it's something that doesn't fit with the marina they have there. You know, they don't have a protected harbor, what they call safe harbor, Michigan.
I understand.
It's tough, but they did go out and get that with private grant. And it was, I think it was $365,000 boat. And it's a wonderful boat for fire. It's got fire pumps on both ends. It's, everything's set up for fire, but it's not really for law enforcement type things we're doing. But it's, we have a wonderful relationship with them too. But that, again, was from a private source and it seemed to look okay there, so.
I understand.
Definitely open-minded though.
Commissioner Law.
So as I understand, Sheriff, as you're out on, out in the county, out places, out on patrol, everything that you do, you're approached by people who would like to help your department. Is that correct?
Yes.
So does this not just set up that avenue that if somebody says to you, Mike, I want to see you get that boat, can I help you? You can now say yes. But I don't believe, and I did not understand, that you are going to actually run a campaign to have people donate to this fund. Am I correct?
Yes. I think that would be a, you know, we see these thermometers from place to place where you fill a thermometer. I'm thinking more in terms of, you know, we'll come up with some thoughts, you know, are we going to do this? And we're going to offer someone a certificate, a bronze, a silver, a gold, and a platinum certificate for donation levels? Do we do it just quietly? How do we do it, you know, raise the funds? I know there are people out there who would like to help us. And facilitating that requires my going through the board with board approval, not just have a bunch of people just start sending checks. So I'm just trying to figure out how we get a boat in the water and how we can provide the safety and security services that we need to.
Commissioner Sloss.
I'm going to support the motion, but it does seem like this is an expenditure that we ought to budget for as well, and a long-term capital improvement plan. And I would just to do that. You've come to the fore as four or five years in a row and our current boats aren't getting any newer. And we do have some responsibility out there. We wouldn't fundraise for a police car or an HVAC system. And if this is a necessary part of doing business, let's figure out how to, how to solve the problem.
Commissioner Reddick.
Are you planning on retiring any of the boats or selling them?
If you look on your list, number two is a 1995 Four Winds Coast Runner, 20-foot, 3-inch. It's a 25-year-old boat. That boat has a, basically a round hull design, a tri-hull type thing. It is not a Great Lakes capable boat at all. We have the Boston Whalers for the internal lakes like Gun Lake and Lake Leona and so forth and rescues. It's, it's kind of, well, it was donated to us by Four Wind Boat Corporation out of Cadillac. They actually live in my neighborhood. It was donated to Leona County. It was kind to them to do it, but it's not really what we need.
Are you planning on selling any of these?
The, we need five boats because of the number of types, like, for instance, you can't launch a big boat down Cedar Lake off Cherry Ben Road. You have to have a small boat, certain draft to be able to launch, and you can't use a small boat on the Great Lakes without, you know, being very, 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 very disregarding for the respect for the water. So that said, we want to keep five. That number two, that 95, that's something we don't need at all. It doesn't have a lot of value, but whatever we got, whatever we get for it, we turn back into county funds.
So everyone knows what the motion is here? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes five to two.
Could you tell us who voted no?
No.
I voted no, and Commissioner Lotner voted no.
No, it's Reddick.
And Commissioner Reddick, you voted no as well, so it's four to three. I'm sorry.
No, no, two, two. It's five to.
You and I are dealing with.
Lotner was a yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misheard it.
Reddick.
And I guess I would say is that when you do your budget, put something in it for replacement of boats. I mean, if you put something in there and you get that, then we can start building towards money for boats, as opposed to if it's not in the budget, then we don't really add it to it. And we're not ones to add to the budget much, but I think that, then it would become a line item and we could have, have money for replacing boats.
Well, you know, this is, it's difficult for me to understand sometimes to get a five to two, but, so the message then for me would be to go and ask for a boat and, you know, go put in for a boat later, because right now, we want to get rid of number two. It's really of no use to us. And we really need to put a Great Lakes boat in. Would it be better if this, next year's budget, I put in for the Great Lakes boat? And just give me straightforward, whatever's best, I'll do whatever the board wants. But if that's a better process, you animated that you don't want to use the, you know, private funding sources, and maybe that would be a smoother way to do it.
I think you misunderstood what I was trying to say.
Okay.
I think that our board policy, that if you accept a donation and you say you're not going out with a campaign, that you come to us and say, I've got a $10,000 donation that's specifically dedicated to that boat, and we vote on that. And that, that would be fine with me.
Okay.
But I just don't understand going out in a public way and setting up a campaign to finance something that is the responsibility of this county to provide to you. And we should do that through our normal channels.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll work with the board and do the best I can, as the sheriff. Shireef, as they said in England in the old days.
So, is there, yes, Commissioner, answer.
It's unrelated to this discussion. Go ahead, finish.
Well, nothing. I was just going to say, I, I mean, I, I'm looking, keep looking for it in the budget, and I haven't seen it, so I don't see it as a priority to you, even though you see it.
It is a priority, but when I found out that I could get 75% of it paid by the feds and that fund is there, and other agencies are getting it, some agencies have three or four or five boats, but they tend to be down more towards Chicago or Louisiana or Detroit or something. So I'm understanding that process. I'm just trying to save the county money however I can.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I just have a related question for the sheriff. Are we going to have people to man the boats next summer?
Yes, that's a really good question. We had a retirement for our three older ones, Charlie Bollonge, Richard Blake, and Paul Pichelle retired on December 4th. We had a little get-together down here and wonderful, 47 years, nine years, and 36 years of seniority in service to Leona County among those three. We also have our Michigan State intern, Logan Bame, and he is senior, and he's graduating, and he wants to be a Michigan Conservation Officer or a National Park Service Ranger, so he's going to begin a job. So I started with a clean slate a few weeks ago. I hired Paul Roboree, who's a former Michigan Conservation Officer. He's a marine safety specialist. He's also a United States Marine, very high energy, very, very much wanted to get back into public service life and save lives. He was on this rescue with me out to the island. Hired Wayne Eddington, who is a retired state police lieutenant, loves water, loves boats, loves Leona. He retired in 2019 to state police. I'd like to bring back our former marine officer we had here named Nicole Anderson. And I've offered her a position. And we've hired Josh Hamilton, who's a senior at Lake Superior State University with the same goal of going into law enforcement. So we have a good staff coming, but we are losing a tremendous resource with those three senior people.
One more thing. Could you just put the boat out to market and get some money to, into the general fund for that purpose?
That, uh, number two.
Number two boat that you want to get rid of?
Actually, I would like to do that.
And could you apply for a 2% grant and show me that you're going to work through some private, I mean, some county-approved, you know, other grant proposals perhaps?
Sure. Now, on that.
This is a conversation you should have a separate.
Sure. Well, and on that, in that light, you know, what I ask for, like, 10% of cost of boat or 50 or 100%, give me some guidance on that and I'll run with that.
Well, that'd be, that would not be this discussion.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can talk about that.
That's a budget. All right. So then I'd like to move on to number three.
All right, that's mine, actually, and this will be short. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Sorry, that's long. It's a little bit of a complicated project, so.
I put this on the agenda before last week's announcement, that there's a ton of agreement between the governor and the House and Senate. As background, I think all of you know, there was no agreement, the governor did a veto. It would have impacted us about $80,000, $10,000 for, I'm ballparking these numbers, $10,000 for state built, about $37,000 for the road patrol. That was our biggest concern. Does that mean you would have had to either lay off an officer or allocate $37,000 more? There also is $30,000 for the probate court childcare program. There's been agreement to restore all those fundings. Supposed to sign this week. I'm guessing it will since everyone agreed to it, but for now, if you could just move this out to next week in the event that something falls apart between now and then. Because if it does, you'd have to make a decision about the road patrol, because we have to either fund the money or issue a layoff notice. So at this point, if you just move it till next week.
I mean, I guess I did, I did hear that there is a hangup in it, in the agreement, because they're, they're trying to limit the veto power of the governor.
Yeah, so that's why.
That's a big hangup.
And that's why I'm not taking it off the agenda. That's why I asked us to move it forward, because you never know in Lansing, until it's signed, what could happen at the last minute.
Real quickly on that, Chet and I discussed this a few weeks ago. We, the Michigan Sheriff's Association is keeping very close tabs. They have lobbyists. They keep very close tabs on this situation with the governor's 149 vetoes. Basically, if worst-case scenario came down and they cut the 416 program, which is SRP Secretary of Road position, you fund basically, it's a $100,000 position approximately, you fund 2/3 of that now for Secretary Road. That's the guy that works the off-roads other than the state highways and is specifically traffic and accident-oriented, very, very necessary position. But if that failed to go through, and we think it will, MSA is close, if fails to go through, we have Ev Bowen is going to plan on retiring on March 1st, and we have Scott Hewens planning on retiring approximately October 11th. We would have an accelerated program. We're going to need to hire somebody, get them trained, so that we don't walk into July one or two people short. So I'll re-approach the board in January with that. The worst-case scenario, we would take and we would either ask one of those guys to step down early, or we would fund a partial year position. In other words, when 2/3 of the year was over, say August, we're done. Then we wouldn't have a Secretary of Road car because the state wouldn't fund the last third. So I think we're in okay shape on that. I do believe it's going to come through because some of the sheriff's offices around the state, like Oakland County and Kent County, there's 20-some positions they'll lose and that public's not going to tolerate that. So I think we'll be okay, but I think we're particularly lucky here because two are in a position to retire, and they're both very cooperative. They're both very good deputies. We'll miss them, but the truth is, we have some flexibility. I'll re-approach the board with that once we know in January.
So I'd ask that, will you have a motion to move this forward to next week?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, this will move forward. So then that brings us to, I mean, the renewal of Hazard Mitigation Plan. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So it's come time again to renew our Hazard Mitigation Plan. I came into this position at the tail end of the renewal and the last go-around. Networks Northwest at the time was Northwest Michigan Council of Governments. They did handle that last time, and they renewed their, their interest in assisting the area counties to renew this plan. It is a 25% in-kind match, which basically spells out for Leona County, our involvement for participation. A lot of it's going to be paid through by attending meetings. So the wages that, that we would pay those individuals to go to the meetings, as you see in the document I gave you, breaking down our in-kind match last time, the GIS information that we would contribute to this plan would more than cover the $11,000 that Leona County would be responsible for.
Do we have Commissioner Law?
I would recommend to the board of commissioners to authorize the Leona County Office of Emergency Management to work with Networks Northwest in submitting the application for the 2020 FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program for the planning and development upgrades of Leona County All Hazards Mitigation Plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Number five, Mr. Pobon is asking to pull this. At this point, he's looking at other options that may be better fit and more cost-effective, so he's requesting that. At this time, it'd just be pulled off the agenda. So, no action taken, it'll just be pulled off the agenda.
So then, that brings us to Senior Services. Is April here?
Yes.
Commissioner.
I move to recommend that we accept the contradictions given to Leona County Senior Services from Bay Area, senior advocates for senior support totaling $1,000, and placed into Leona County Services account number ending in .678.000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
And it brings us to an update on Beta.
Yes. I have met with Beta several times since our last board meeting in November, and talked about different options, taking into account your request for door-to-door services and what might be able to work. They recently approached me and said that they are working on a Northwest Michigan Ride to Wellness micro-transit pilot project, that they're hoping to begin in the spring of 2020. And so, this would be for grand drivers in Leona County, and it would have a technology component that people would be able to access through calling in or using a cellphone or a computer, that would be able to connect them with transportation within a timely matter, so, within a short period of time. And they have to work out the details of what that would look like in Leona County.
Excuse me, April, but would you tell me the name of that program again?
Northwest Michigan Ride to Wellness.
Okay.
And so, they, they would eligible to be able to access through the different types of technology, and they'd be able to track the different types of ridership, and they would be working with stakeholders who serve seniors, people with disabilities, veterans would be the focus. And so, they're working through this pilot project, so I would like to just kind of see how they, how things unfold, and look to where that we could establish a collaboration between them next year, as they get closer to figuring out the details of what that would look like. In the meantime, we already do an income and asset testing for services through our department, and we are going to add transportation, that we would be able to provide Beta passes for those that need those qualifications, as well as continue our other volunteer transportation options as well.
Great.
Any questions?
I wanted to thank you for the extra effort you put forward in this area. Sometimes, when we go back and look at a project, we get a better product, so I just want to thank you for doing that. And I think that we are moving towards a better product here for our citizens that have the need, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Laugner?
The Ride to Wellness, that wouldn't just be for seniors, it would be for anyone, and is it pretty much an on-demand thing? Where they would contact Beta and just-
It's my understanding, the way they're working on it, it would be an on-demand, they could call up and then they could get a ride that day. And you know, I don't know, the timeframe, that's something that they have to work at on their end. But the focus of the Ride to Wellness would be focused on seniors, people with disabilities or veterans, and, you know, that's in the beginning stages here, so how that develops, I can't speak for Beta.
Okay, great.
And just a quick update, and seriously, sure, last month, you passed all those contracts, and I believe Mr. Russell brought a concern about means testing, wanted a clause in there, and we did put those in all those contracts, and Mr. Buck signed them, so we're all set.
Okay, great. Good job.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to number seven, the Planning Community Development Remonitation Plan.
Yeah, Mrs. Gala is at her ground field concert, conference, but this is an inter-request to submit our application for funds again for 2020.
Commissioner Laugner?
I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the 2020 Remonitation Grant Award in the amount of $31,621, and submit all required documentation to the state by December 31st, 2019.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
And I just want you to know that Trudy has done an outstanding job with this program. She has restructured it, we have some new companies involved, and we're doing it the same way we handle all programs and services, so we went off the bids for proposals, there are minutes taken, there are minutes, and so forth, and we're sticking by the terms of the contract, so Trudy has really streamlined the entire process.
Commissioner Laugner?
Neil?
Yeah?
Thank you. I just wanted to recommend Trudy for picking that responsibility up, and she should be commended.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Laugner?
May I ask at this point, under Administrator Number E, we have, is that just an update on the Leona County Assessment District?
Yeah. Yeah, Lori and-
Could we do that now, since we have some public-
If Lori and Rob are here, yeah.
Does any, is that okay with everybody? Just, I know, we're going to be breaking for lunch, and it's going to be a while before we get to it, and we've got some public interested in the update?
I can see it there, yeah.
I would agree, and I would also suggest if we can handle the Parks and Recreation, because we have two people here for that.
Before we go to lunch?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine.
Well, just, I'm going to start with Parks and Recs, I'll do Lori and-
Yes, let's do Parks and Rec first. Are there questions about it, or not? Please come forward. So, that's number eight, it should be on, I don't know, page 58?
I don't think we've got anything that does an option.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we're sitting here.
Yes.
I would recommend that we approve the Community Parks Recreation Open Space Agreement Plan as submitted.
Second.
Any statements about this? Mr. Laugner?
Just process, so, we're going to be getting some updated maps and some things?
By Tuesday, yeah. I just talked with Klaus-
Oh, by Tuesday, okay.
Yeah, I talked with Klaus again this morning, and I talked with Rob too, Herman, and Klaus is going to pass some information to him ASAP, and Rob said he had plenty of time to get the mapping done, so that piece will be in place.
Great. Okay.
I had a concern about, it was asking, it's actually, seems to ask in there, one of the goals is to have an attendant for the parks. It sounds like the parks want to now start having employees that I thought we don't have at this time, and that puts it as a goal, and I, I don't know, I mean, I guess I don't-
I didn't see that. So, I didn't either. Is it in the plan?
That's a good question, and I know, historically speaking, if we went back about 10 years, not the previous one of this, but the previous one to that, it was kind of in our sights to have somebody from the Parks and Rec Commission be in charge, sort of, as a person, not as an employee. Now, we have employees that are doing the parks, so-
They're doing that now.
If it's in here, if you can reference that for me, and then I'll talk to Klaus and-
I just read, I haven't, there, I didn't highlight it, but I just had talked about an attendant for the parks, is what it talked about, and that's what, I wasn't sure what that really meant. You know, is it the people from the-
Well, we, all of the discussion we've had with people that work at the parks, we've got the full-time person, and then there's a part-time that we've talked openly about, you know, working with you folks to have someone that could step in a bit, and if that kind of worked out last year, but then fell apart, because things change now, we don't have enough for a full position, so it's just a part, and that's the only thing I'm aware of, and if it's in here, alert me to it, and we'll take care of it.
Yep.
Because that's not part of what we're looking at.
Right.
Any, any, see, and we will get more specific, you're saying in the back pages about what he'll say.
Those will be filled in, yep. I just talked to Klaus.
Yeah, I did see them.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes five to two.
For me, I would like to see what the goals are.
Yes, I apologize. Yeah, we spent a lot of time on that, actually, the last two times Klaus has been with us.
Right.
Hammering those things out, and I think this is what was provided, and on the website, at a little bit earlier date, before those were hammered out and done, I'm surprised they didn't get added in.
Right, so for me, this-
I apologize for that.
It was incomplete.
Yeah.
That's why I have a no vote.
Totally understand. Totally understand.
Couldn't have guessed it today, for sure.
Move forward. All right, five to two. So then, that brings us to the MDR grant.
I don't know, we're going to go.
So you're looking for $93,000, or whatever it was?
Oh, we've shifted gears to look at finishing up the Veronica Valley grant application for this next cycle. We've toned down the size of that to fit better and get more points, and we're in just the very last stages of that, Goslin is, and us too, so we'll be able to bring that proposal in January, along with the request for the match, whatever that is at that point. So we're right, finishing up the details on that, and we'll bring that to you in January.
All right.
Okay, so, there's no motion or anything needed on that?
Great.
Just a little bit next, I don't know.
Lake Willow District.
Yeah, the SAD.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Last month, you requested that we update the Special Assessment District.
Yes.
So, Rob Herman is here, and Lori, and Rob did a great job. I thought it would take him substantial time, and Robert did a lot of the work beforehand. So, Rob, do you want to just give an update?
Sure.
So, we're at 10E now, is that appropriate?
This is 10E, yes, yes, thank you.
So I just went and grabbed all the parcels on the lake with frontage, and there's 1,479 total parcels on the lake.
1,479?
Yep. 95% are residential, and then the total taxable value is $322 million.
For 2019?
For 2019, yep.
But it's not, the special assessment's not based on taxable value, it's based on front foot, divided by whatever the budget would end up being, and we haven't been given any numbers in terms of-
No, that's, they haven't got that. And how many new parcels, or how many splits were there, did you tell me, 50?
Yeah, 50 to 60, somewhere in there, since the last district in 2005.
So, as you know, the boundaries have stayed exactly the same, but within that boundary, there's approximately, I think you said 52 or 53-
Yeah.
New parcels or splits.
Make sure I answer. Does that include the state land?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Laugner? Do you have a question?
Only that, we used the sliding scale last time for 80, 20, or whatever it was, based on whether it was residential or whether it was something else, and-
One of the things that we're trying to retrieve, last time, the Board of Commissioners paid the assessors to come up with the front foot, so that they could do that math. When Ron extracted this data, which is buried in an archive, he gave us the parcel code numbers, which Rob was able to use, but that information, unless we can retrieve it, and I've asked him if we could do that, would have to be recalculated or figured out, but... And I don't even know where that file is, to be honest with you, I've been looking for it.
I thought the clerk had it, I had a conversation with her about it, because I wanted to make sure that we did that for those parts, because if it aren't residential, you know, we can't, they can't afford to be paying that full 100%.
Yeah, I have a letter that said regarding the Circuit Court's order for the dam, or not for the dam, but for setting the lake level, but I don't have anything in terms of what they decided, other than I was told it was on a front-foot basis.
So, the-
The clerk would have to find that information. I'm sure it's there somewhere.
Okay, the other thing that it could be done, is rather than do it per front, is like a per residential, per residence?
REU, Residential Equivalent Unit.
Well, I'm not sure, because that could be something that, hi, it's a best-use type thing, isn't it? So if there's a vacant piece of parcel, they'll say, oh, well, it should have this many residential units, and that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for, like, established homes today, and could it be split across those that way?
Vacant parcels pay less than developed parcels.
Well, that's the 100%, that's the split I'm talking about.
I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
Really, that's a discussion you need to have in a future meeting, because first up was, you asked them to do the work, that part is done. The dam authorities meeting Thursday, Thursday, to try to do a budget, at some point, they have to come to you with a budget, then you have to decide whether you want to do a special district, and then if you wish to do a special district, how you wish to allocate those funds, so that's way down the road at this point. And you have to some public hearings. So, this is all, we were asking at this point, and they have completed this task, just so you know. But the dam authority has to come back to you with a proposed budget, and then we have to make sure that what they're proposing is allowable by law, because there are certain things that are not allowable that you can access to, so that's a long discussion, and you have to decide whether you want to proceed with those projects, and if you do, you want to take it from county funds, do you want to take it from a SAD district, or do a combination? And if you decide to do it with a special assessment district, then you decide how you want to allocate those special assessment districts. So this is the beginning of the beginning of the process.
Okay.
So at least this part is done, so we, no, so if you ask how many parcels there are, they have all that information for you.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yes.
Michelle, they were just talking about, we were talking about the 80, 20 split, or whatever. Do you have that information?
Yeah, everyone has access to it.
Okay.
I mean, it wasn't to E.
Whatever, it was a sliding scale, wasn't it, for?
You don't have a percentage for this type of property, so it's not just the list.
Percentages, then.
Yeah. I'm sure at one meeting next year, you'll want to have the Commissioner, Michelle, provide it. Yeah, Lori obviously would not have access to that information, that's not her department.
Okay. May we ask, the public, since they've sat through this long, did they, are they here for any more information than what we just provided for them?
Go ahead.
You spent a lot of time here this morning, so, is there, what are you looking for from us today? Are you just curious about the process, or where we are, or?
Yes, I think that's mainly when we heard that, you know, there possibly could be another special assessment, and he makes that decision, rather than how many funds being used, as opposed to just property owners that live on a lake.
Okay.
So, I guess that threw us down the-
We're getting a lot of emails asking us to do the 50-50, like we did the last time, where the county paid 50%, and then the landlord, or the right guardian paid the other 50%. We're getting a lot of requests for that split, with that in.
Well, that's a decision, to answer your question, that's a decision of the County Board, and they're a long ways from making that decision.
We don't know how much it's going to cost, you know, and so, I mean, if they come with a budget that's $100,000, maybe we don't have to go through this whole SAD thing, you know, but if they, if it's $2 million, well, then we probably do, so, first, we got to know what it's going to cost here. I think that's the-
The gist of the whole.
Yeah.
We're preparing.
So, we're just waiting for the dam authority to come through.
Okay.
So, who would we send a email to with the request?
To Mr. Bunnackaride, and we'd pass on to the full board members, or any of the Commissioners, actually.
Yeah.
Send it to your Commissioner.
Good one.
But yes, I would just like to express my opinion, which, I don't know if you're allowed to say that.
Not this time.
You can allow for it.
We've already asked her, yeah.
She's going to-
Go ahead.
Would you have her come to the table?
As long as it's not too long.
It won't be. I, you know, it's just that everyone uses-
Sorry, could you state your name, so we have it for the record?
Leroux, L-E-R.
Could you have her, could you have her come?
Yeah, you have to come up here, so we can record it. Thank you, thank you.
You're done.
I was trying to get information. Did you get my name?
L-E-R.
O-U-X. Thanks.
Thank you for volunteering.
Oh, well, I don't like to speak in front of public.
Well, the important thing here, if I can say, Mr. Chair, is that your question may be a question other people have, and this way, it's being recorded, and they will be able to get the same over, so that's why we ask.
Well, thanks for the opportunity, and thank you for moving us forward on the agenda. I appreciate it. Interesting meeting, though. I guess we're, we've owned property here on the lake since 1989, and we own a significant portion of property on the lake. And we felt kind of at a disadvantage when we were taxed very highly for the original dam assessment. And I know, I'm not saying I don't want to pay anything, because, you know, we use the lake like everybody else, but that's my point, everybody else uses the lake, just like they use the roads, just like they use the parks, and it's concerning to me, so I appreciate that you're looking at other options as far as footage on lakefront footage, because that's how it was assessed last time, and I'll tell you, we got hit really hard. It was, and we didn't have our home built at that time, and now we do, but we did have property and a building on the property at that point, but it was, I felt, you know, it was done unfairly. But we didn't live here at the time, so, and I know we could have had, come up to offer our voice in this, but now we live here, and I thank you for letting us express our opinion, and the process.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I really applaud all of you for, and I can see that you're trying to represent everyone, and that's, that helps us feel a little bit better as, you know, as citizens of the community, so, thank you.
All right, now, did you guys want a break for lunch now?
Yeah, probably.
Sorry. We'll take a recess here for about 20 minutes, okay? All right, half hour. We'll be back here in a quarter after. Would you like to call us back to order, please?
Is it taken?
So then, we're at with number nine, the county clerk, the year-end budget amendments.
The first request is the standard one I come to you with, to you every year, and The first request is the standard one I come to you with, to you every year, and it's to make the necessary budget adjustments at year-end to avoid any deficits and audit findings in the general fund.
Michelle, I'm sorry.
I move to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve, authorize the county clerk to make any year-end adjustments, and transfer if necessary to avoid year-end deficits in the various departments' budgets within the general fund. No transfers, adjustments to go beyond funds in contingency. All transfers, adjustments require the signature of the county clerk.
Court? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, so then that brings us to record preservation.
The second request is record preservation, and this came about, really what got me thinking about it was when Commissioner Rushton first came on board, and we had one of those meetings with the Board of Commissioners. She asked what, she asked everyone, and I knew my time was coming, what our goals were for the department, and I'm thinking, goals? We're just trying to get through the daily work. I wasn't thinking about the goals. So it was a good question. So I brought us a copy of the census book that you approved two years ago, just to show you whether it was that book from the forties.
Can we get that a look?
Yeah, yeah, come on in.
It looks beautiful.
And this was about thirty-eight hundred dollars to just one book. And what they've done is they've taken the mold and mildew and scraped the pages, and they put them in these. We were able to use back-to-back. This book was literally falling apart.
Looks up, yeah.
And I also have a digital copy of it.
So you could slip these out, or you know?
You could, but there's no point, too, because if we wanted just to one page, it's got slots here, and we can just take out a page. Plus, we can also produce them from the C D. And what you can see is, over the years, though, it's gotten lighter and lighter, and this is from eighteen ninety-four. And Lansing would love this, but what happens is it goes into a quality control type of room, and it's great, it's preserved, but what good is a preservation if no one can see it? So it's just been one that we've been able to hold on to, and now I don't worry about the oils from your hands coming through. People can actually look at this, and you can find your families.
Is this in numerical order?
It's by township, I believe.
Township in numerical order, is what I was wondering. This is Bingham.
Yeah, and so this is available for anyone, so if you're interested in... So here's Centerville, it says up here.
Are they alphabetical?
This is Glen Arbor. This book is really heavy, that's why I brought it in on the chair. I mean, we can lift it, but it's nothing we want to lift a lot of. We own our township, we own Solon.
Okay, I think you've seen it.
Come on, this is just getting fine. It's gorgeous, Michelle. Heavy.
Well, this, it is very heavy. So what this project... It came to light this summer when we got, it doesn't sound like a lot probably in your world, but we got two different requests, and one was for sixty records, which took a couple weeks to prepare, because we found out we had to go into the archives, because what was handwritten, we had to go back and look at. So here is a return of births from eighteen seventy-two, but you can see what's happening. Is they're turning yellow, and they're starting to rip. And so I'm still doing a little research, and I'm talking to the Department of Vital Statistics and their retention, because this is the only company, and I've looked around at all of our conferences, this is the same company that did this. Can I buy this library someplace else? Yes. Can I buy these pages? Yes. But what I can't replicate at a lower cost is the removing of the mold, the, all the chemicals. I don't have the ability to do that. I can't find another company that does this, and I still want to work with the state to make sure, because there is a little hesitancy about letting the records go. They don't come to, but they do, all their information says that they are secure, they do this work throughout the country, and I have access to these records at any time I want them. I'm not as worried, because most of them are more than a hundred years old, so I don't have the confidentiality issue with them, but they're still valuable records. But I have no reason to doubt that they're anything other than what they are safety-wise. The cost that I got was we counted all of the births only. I mean, there's deaths too, but births, I think, at this point are more important. And it was eighty-nine hundred. They will do it incrementally if I don't feel comfortable sending them everything at once, and I'm not sure I would, because I want to get these organized in a different fashion that's easier and quicker for people to find them. So they will let me do this incrementally, still holding to the same cost. I have three thousand that's left in my nineteen budget, and I have ten thousand budgeted for two thousand twenty. So I certainly have the funds, but I know we have bidding requirements, but I don't have anyone to bid this, to bid, because if you push too far, then the state's going to want these records, and I don't want that to happen, because then I don't have access to them. So that's really all I can...
Say that again. You don't have anybody to bid them.
Like to sign it up for bids.
Right.
I got that quote from this company.
Where does the state come in?
The state has a room that's controlled, where they would just keep them.
Oh, I see. No, we don't want to do that. We want ours back.
A lot of clerks keep them in these little boxes like this. I was just at a conference, and one clerk said, oh, you know those Omaha stakes that you can get through the mail, those white styrofoam things? She goes, I have a bunch of those in my vault, and they hold all these vital statistics. I'm like, yeah, those are the kind of records I'm talking about. So it is a little aggressive, but, you know, we don't want these records to integrate, I don't think.
Do we need to waive the bid policy, or just as you're...
You could waive the bid policy. I mean, I did get a quote, but I didn't go out and get formal bids.
All right, well, I would make this motion. I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve and authorize the county clerk to enter into agreement with co-file for records preservation as outlined in the good faith estimate of eight thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars, based on page count, submitting the bill occurring on the actual page counts, and that we waive the bid policy for thus.
I'm support.
Any statements or anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes seven zero.
Okay, good, thank you. The other one that we're presenting here, it's something that Jen Chet and I have been working on, and we've been working with attorney Courtney, and I can't pronounce her last name, Gaffara?
Yes.
Okay. Don't, don't.
Yeah, I won't say it.
So this is your policy, number twenty-two. It is the travel policy, and although you did just revise this in August twentieth, there can always be challenges to policy. So we are updating this again to you, and hopefully we've accomplished everything that needs to be made. If you have a copy of it, I think I sent you the yellow parts of what's been changed. What we're really trying to do here, a couple things are, in the first paragraph, very important, that there's going to be no duplication or pyramid-ing of benefits to any employees. That was a huge sentence to have put in here, and that will solve a lot of issues. A lot of it's just clean up. We've had to put written in, itemized, but we have also added a section here, and we delineated overnight travel and then a daytime travel. And the daytime travel came on page five of adding, it's under section six, and it would allow one meal not to exceed ten dollars. And that would include if there was a gratuity or anything, and an itemized receipt, and it talks about how you get that one meal. And then on page six, some special regulations were put in here. I think that you're all aware of what's led to the changes in this.
If I can say, I don't have that in my board packet.
I sent it on Sunday night. On Sunday night? Would you like this?
No, I'll find it. Because I see everybody's...
It was like six or, six or seven that night.
Sunday at seven, I think.
No, I have just my copy here. Not for everybody.
The only one I have, I have it sent Sunday night. So... Yeah, I did, but...
Didn't Michelle send it once a day?
Oh, Sunday.
Sunday at seven fifty-one.
I move to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revised Leland County Board Policy Number Twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. That brings us then to administration and the Board of Commissioners appointments. Let's see.
Well, as you know, we have a special meeting afterwards, so I just recommend you pass this on to next Tuesday night, because by then you'll have your recommendation.
Someone?
I have no question in that, because this is going to be a special meeting?
No, it's a committee of the whole meeting.
Oh, okay.
This afternoon, so you're just making your recommendation. Those we pass on to next Tuesday night.
Okay.
No.
Any other questions?
Did anybody support the motion?
I don't think we have support. It was just an update, right?
No, you have to move it on to the general.
I need a motion to put it on Tuesday night's agenda.
Right, I don't, I thought the commissioner sort of segmented it, didn't you? No?
Oh, yes. Oh, okay, thank you. Whatever. Second.
So everyone knows, this is just to move it on to next, so when we do our committee of the whole, we can, you know, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. And that brings us to special meeting reminder, December thirty-first. Michelle, what time is that?
Well, I don't know. I thought it was one, one...
I want to say one o'clock, I thought.
I think so, two.
Well, we'll send you, I'll send you an email, but just a reminder.
Send a reminder.
Yes, just wanted, you know, just as just a reminder, because I know you're busy at county year and people have plans, but it is December thirty-first, and we'll try to keep it as short as possible.
I anticipate claims and accounts, approval of amendments that have been approved, and maybe some contracts.
What potential?
Transfers and amendments.
Or transfers and amendments, Joe.
If we have labor agreements.
Oh, okay.
All right, so then that brings us then to the M M R M A, the county...
Yeah, Jen may want to state for this one. This is our annual renewal. It's on the agenda every year at this time. As you know, we are co-owner of M M R A, and virtually every county is a part of that partnership. It is a little more than past year, is because, from a county standpoint, Jen, explain that, because you did a great job of that.
Sorry, which part am I...
M M R A.
Oh, so M M R M A is a self-insurance, our self-insurance fund that covers all of our liability for the county. And being self-insured, it is into a pool, so similar to like our pool payments that we get from Blue Cross Blue Shield, they look at all the claims, and then depending on the basis of the balance that's left in that pool to sustain, they then allocate it back to the counties. In this regard, we have budgeted in the past that money coming back in, and then able to turn around and send that to MERS. In this case, this policy year, we are recommending that the board absorb that money back into that retention fund, due to some foreseen or possible claims against our retention. Yep, and so typically, I think, do they update you in June or July? Is that when they come and do their presentation kind of?
Yeah, yeah.
Any kind of mentions that you need about seventy-five thousand dollars a claim or so forth? So we have twenty-five thousand in there. So your number this year is a hundred and seventeen, is that what it is, or a hundred and twenty-seven? Yep, so that, that amount of money, instead of coming back into us as a revenue line item, it will be a vacant line item for twenty nineteen. In essence, there was two ways of going about it. They could have sent it to us, I would have done an amendment, I would have told you we're signing it back, and this just works better financially. They told us that they could guarantee that that money would be in there for December thirty-first. One of those reasons it is for December thirty-first is if I'm, if we are audited as a county and our M M R M A does not have sufficient retention to cover our costs, we are reported to the state. And so this was a major issue that needed to be taken care of before year-end.
Page sixty is the best overview, gets a breakdown of the cost.
Hundred and twenty-one thousand sixty-five.
So that will be coming, it'll actually, basically, your paperwork transfer will come right back into our fund. But we won't see the revenue on our side of that for the budget. Good news is, I will be bringing budget amendments. I'm hoping to transfer some of them to you Tuesday, as well as year-end. And our, currently, I believe, our tax is collected versus what was reported is an over plus of three hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm not worried about the hundred thousand that we're putting back into M M R M A. We've already collected ahead of schedule.
If it is unneeded, then do they...
Yes, Chet and I did ask that question. So if these claims against us do go away, in a sense, we can ask for a withdrawal.
Yeah.
And they would send that to us, and then we could, we would report it as revenue. Yep.
It's, it's our money, it's just how we...
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Well, yeah, I did wonder, since we'd had this to deal with.
It's been quite a few years that we've had that come in without, yeah, without hesitation, so.
And since we are co-owners, it's not a mandate that we go off of bids, you don't have to waive policy, because we are part owners of this nonprofit.
We have a motion.
So is it, does this most...
It's right here, page fifty-nine.
Is it, does it still stand? It's written, then you're good with it? Okay, well, I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners the approval of twenty nineteen renewal for property and casualty insurance between Leland County and Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, M M R M A, and the amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-one thousand sixty-five dollars, funds to come from eight-three-zero, ending in nine-five-four, point zero seven zero.
And to request waive board policy on bid requirements.
Certainly, I would add that.
Oh, I second that, okay. What are you looking at me for? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. You opened your mouth. All right, so then that brings us to twenty twenty copy machine maintenance removal.
Again, this is our annual request. We do have machines, and this is the maintenance, the annual maintenance fee to maintain those machines.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move to recommend waiving the board policy on bid requirements and approve the twenty twenty service maintenance agreement renewal with Net Lake Business Solutions that would cost not to exceed thirteen thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents, with twelve thousand six ninety-four ninety to come from account number ending in eight oh one dot zero zero zero, and one thousand one hundred and thirteen to come from dot eight oh one dot zero zero zero.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. They are different eight oh ones, one's five twenty-four and one is six forty-five, just to clarify that.
I, I amend my motion.
It's already passed. Okay, so then that brings us to, I think, a little special assessment district update? We've already been through that?
We did that.
Yes. And now, so we're at early childhood millage update?
Yeah, this is just an update also, since the millage passed in November, and I just have not had any experience with this type of a request, as is due for us. I've been talking with David Stoker, our legal counsel, to help us guide through the process, and then had some meetings with Lisa Peacock at the Health Department, set up a meeting with the Chair of the Benzy County Health Board, and with the Benzy County Administrator and myself, to make sure we're all thinking alike here. So let me just try to give an update and clarify some of the issues that have surfaced. First, let me pass out the ballot, and if you look at the ballot, the question, we're not doing this, is the language in terms of the years. It's a five-year millage from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four. So the question was, why was this not on the nineteen tax rolls? Because it starts, the first year it will be on these tax rolls will be December of twenty twenty. Does that mean that the program of services cannot start part of that? No, that's up to you as commissioners. And Michelle is not here, but what David Stoker said, it really, it made sense to do it this way, because it'd be difficult to collect, you could get challenged, collect millages for a program that we have those national services for. So that's why the twenty twenty years was on the ballot, that's what the board, that's what he recommended, and that's what you approved on the ballot. However, you do have the option, if you wish, the money is guaranteed for twenty twenty. So, and Michelle's going to be here, but I can speak as we talk, which, if you wish to start programs, and we'll talk about how we start those programs, in twenty twenty, you simply basically fund yourself with the guarantee that money's going to be repaid with the military. you simply basically fund yourself with the guarantee that money's going to be repaid with the military. So money is guaranteed because it was approved by the voters. So while it will be collected in December of, it'll be on the tax rolls for December of 2020 through December of 2024. If the board chooses to, you can allocate funds from the general fund for 2020 and part of that motion would be that the money be reimbursed to the county from the village, right? So that is possible. So next question is, how do we go forward with this? To have money allocated, you need to have a legal contract with an organization. So let's use the Health Department, because that's the one that seems to be the one that has the most dialogue with. And that's why the Benzie County Administrator and I and the chair of the Health Department met prior to the Health Department Board meeting last month. So what happened is, there'd have to be an organization like the Health Department. It doesn't have to be limited to the Health Department, but let's use the Health Department because that seems to where legally makes sense at this point. There would have to be a contract in place between the Health Department and Leland County Board of Commissioners. That contract has to have a scope of work in it and has to have a budget amount. So let's say there's agreement that there's $200,000 in this contract, I just make that number out. The county would have to approve that and that money then would be transferred into a special account for that part of the services. Once the village money comes in, the county will be reimbursed for that. But in the contract, there has to be a scope of work. That scope of work has to be fed into the compliance of what was on the ballot and by state law and it has to be a budget amount. So it can't be just a contract with the Health Department for services. It has to be for specific scope of work of services and a dollar amount linked to that. Those funds have to be part of the village request and it has to be approved by both boards, Health Department boards and the County Board of Commissioners. It doesn't have to be limited to the Health Department. Cat County has partnered with several nonprofits. So it's up to the county board, but you can allocate money in 2020 knowing that money's guaranteed from the military. But it has to be a contract in place, the contract has to have a scope of work and a specific budget. So in a nutshell, some other questions that came out and helped the Commissioner Lauder, not because you were at the meeting too. One question was, Benzie County, are they in any kind of financial risk? And the answer is no. This is strictly limited to Leland County. The money cannot be used for any services outside of Leland County. Is there actual financials issues? That's what the county is telling Benzie County, because that was one of the concerns that Benzie County has. Because it's a dual county Health Department, but this village is a Leland County village. It's not a Benzie County village, nor are they liable for any issues. Also, there is no legal liability on Benzie County or actually Leland County. If there is some issues, the Health Department is a separate entity, a separate legal body. So there has to be a contract in place approved by the county Health Department Board and it has to be approved by this board. I believe the Health Department is having a special meeting Thursday to look at a proposal that Mrs. Peacock has put together, a concept proposals. If that is the case, if that's approved Thursday, then at some point you'd have to come to the county board in January. I insisted that if there are those agreements, those contracts will be drawn up by Mr. Stoker on behalf of Leland County. Obviously, they would look at it, their council would look at it, but we would take the leadership in drafting those contracts. I think those were the major key points. So this time, there's nothing to resent to you, other than it appears that the Health Department is drafting up a proposal for your consideration.
I just had a couple of questions. One, one is, does the Benzie County Board have to approve of this?
No.
No?
They don't have, they have no legal status.
They don't have any with the contract that, because they're part of that Health Department?
No, no, because that's a, they're their own board, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Now, Health, the Health Department Board has to approve of this.
Right, right, right. But then the other thing is, is this, when I read this, it doesn't say anything about being able to pay debt. It says that everything has to go for development, implementation, coordination, monitoring of early childhood development. So when the village comes in, it, it doesn't say anything here that I can pay it back, debt back to Leland County.
If it's part of the 2020, if we, if the board wishes to do that, you basically borrow the money from yourself and pay for those services. It has to be paid for those services.
No, but, but the village money specifically has to go to early childhood development. It can't go to pay debt. So when that village comes in, it can't go to pay us back the money. Then we loan it.
Yes, it can. Mr. Stoker says yes, because it's for those services. That would have to be part of the legal contract.
But it doesn't say anything in here about paying debt off.
Well, it's, it's not a debt, it's a loan. You're basically borrowing from yourself.
But as a county, we can't loan money.
Right.
You're not, you're spending your own money. You're not loaning your money.
We're loaning, that would be a loan, just call it a loan, that would be a loan.
Well, you're loaning to yourself. You, you are spending county money for county services if you agree to a contract.
I don't know, it doesn't say anything in there.
I think the question is in advance, not...
Actually, that idea came from Mr. Stoker.
Well...
Okay.
And that's why it says twenty, so if he's, if he's having it in December on the 2019, it's 2020. If he wished to have it in writing, I'm sure he'll be glad to do it.
I think he ought to because we were talking to Peter Cole and he didn't think that we could actually call it a loan.
Well, it's, it's, it's not a loan, that's probably a bad choice. Maybe Michelle, because Michelle's part of that discussion about the county fronting money to itself.
I would call it advancing.
Advancing, whatever you wish to call it. Maybe loan's a bad word, but actually, Mr. Stoker came up with that idea.
It would, it would be similar to how the townships operate, where they take from their fund balance before the funds come in and then they replenish it back. And we would check with the auditors if that was your, your wish to do to make sure it was all set up appropriately. But the townships do it quite frequently and, you know, we do a lot of checks too because we're floating the money from over here until we get it over here, so.
It's funny because Mr. Cole said it wouldn't be prudent to do that with the village because it doesn't say anything about, you know, advanced money, paying it back.
Well, you would, we would, I mean, I would be understanding you would pay it back.
Right, but he's saying that's not a prudent way to handle the village, because it, it could be that they can't pay it back if it's only for, you know, for giving it to early childhood development.
Well, the month, the village is guaranteed by the voters, so we have to pay it back.
And all the money would be flowing through us, so it's now something...
So it's like, we wouldn't have to go and look for it.
No, no, you wouldn't have to go look for it because it would all be coming and going through us. That money is off of us.
Yeah, it would not be going to a third party coming, they would not, I, I see what you're saying. It's not that we would, let's just say the Health Department. The money would not go to the Health Department. It would have to go to the county, then we would have to allocate it to the Health Department. So I see what you're saying.
Commissioner Wesson.
Um, this question is probably for Michelle. Where would those dollars come from?
They would come from the county's general fund fund balance.
The general fund fund balance?
That, that would be our, unless John had a different thought process.
And, and that was my next question, you know, if we're taking this out, then as an advance or a loan or whatever you want to call it, uh, the loss of income that we may have earned from what?
Oh, you mean the interest?
Yeah, we would, we, we would not be, we would not be able to collect interest on funds that we've loaned or advanced or whatever. And so I don't see where it's an advantage to the county financially.
I'm saying you have that option, you have to exercise it.
I'm bringing the point to the table, is all I'm doing.
Well, and I don't, I don't believe and I'm not sure, this is estimated to draw in seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. I would, I would presume, because nothing's in writing yet, also it would be going out incrementally too. Would it be a matriate, just, but your point's well taken and it's something we certainly would want to, we want to discuss as to what dollar amount that would be.
At a cost we can't recover.
Well, would the county be able to get back the money it cost for that election?
Not on my budget.
Okay, so we wouldn't be able to then?
Those are dates set by the state. It's just like the only money election-wise I can get back from another entity is, um, that was a county approved language. But the add-on that I had, I had a couple thousand dollars in cost to do the new Northport sewer.
Right.
That was. I have special language I had to publish because of that. I can reel back for that, but my budget is picked up at the cost. March is election, president of the primary dictated by a higher entity. I can get that money back, but there is no, um, this is just one of those dates that I have to be prepared for.
Any other questions, Paula? So we're going to wait to hear from the Health Department on that. Yes.
I'm, I'm a little alarmed by a lot of what I've heard and even the process. So I go to my Health Board meeting last month and, um, the director of the Health Board is stating confidently that they have been chosen for these services. And I asked her why she said that. Well, ballot language, well, ballot language says in main, and it says a portion of the village may. And she says, well, Leland County told me we'd been chosen, chosen. Now, last month, after the election, there was not a word at this table mentioned about early childhood education. I said, well, who in Leland County? And she said that the day after the election, she began to, that check called her and, and...
I talked about the legal process. No way was, I say they were chosen.
So, my problem is that, well, and Lisa took it that they were chosen. So the Board of Health has taken it that they were chosen. So at this meeting, Commissioner Rittenbach and I are already on the board and Patricia Soto Slitt also comes and with great confidence, we hear how this board is going to support it because, in her words, she would be very surprised if the, her co-chair and the maker of the amend, the motion to put this on the ballot wouldn't support her. And so it is very disturbing to me that there seems to be this, already this number of commissioners who seem to be all on board together, that this is going to run forward through the Health Department. That hasn't been determined.
You do have the option, you choose to go out for bids, Mr. Stoker.
So, the Health Department now wants to have a special meeting Thursday to present this to go forward for three hundred and some thousand dollars. And her reasoning being that the Leland County Administration and Board of Commissioners, as well as legal counsel, I, maybe I'll back that up, um, that the goal is to, that this proposal would be established in interim agreement and would allow for the Leland County Health Department to increase staffing capacity and facilitate planning for development, multi-years of strategic education, clear goals, objective measures in collaboration with the Health Board and Board of Commissioners, et cetera. That hasn't been determined at this table. So I would think that for something this important, that we can take the scope of work the Health Department has presented to us and use it, I guess, because it's a public document, it's available. But we need to be doing RFPs for these services. We have to do our due diligence on this money and that we shouldn't just be assuming that this is going to be done through the Health Department. So I would suggest that, I think, we ought to do something along the line. I would suggest that we put some committees together in January to look at which programs we ought to be selecting the programs, um, and what the, and put together those RFPs based on these scopes of services and put those out for, um, for proposals.
Any other questions?
Just want to clarify one point. The only discussion I had with Lisa was, we both were concerned about the legal process, how it would go forward after the village passed. There was no discussion about any guarantee with Leland County. In fact, when I went to the Health Department Board, I stated exactly what Commissioner Lauder was saying, that one option is to go out for bids. And Mr. Stoker actually said that's a decision your board can make. You can go out for RFPs or proposals, or you can negotiate with organizations. More than a war, you can negotiate with two, three if you wish, but you do have the right to go out for bids. And that's a decision that the county board needs to make. The Health Department's proceeding with the potential of putting in a proposal for your consideration, but there's no guarantee or commitment.
Commissioner Suter Slitt.
Just, uh, two comments. One is a just a correction at the Health Department meeting. My words were not, they would support me, but would support the project. Now, the reason being is, my co-chair and I on the committee, the forty-two member committee recommended that this be located in the Health Department. So when it was presented to this board, it was presented in that, in that manner. So I just wanted to correct that.
Any other comments? Commissioner Wesson.
It's not surprising that, that there'd be some discussion with the Health Department, Health Board, since the ballot language did include that language in the, in the ballot, on the ballot. So of course, there'd be some discussion, that's not a commitment, but it shouldn't be surprising to any of us that those discussions are taking place. And I, for one, uh, I, I, I know what the Health Department's done with our families. Uh, we'd be, we'd be hard pressed to find somebody to deliver those services any better than the Health Department. So I, I, I would not be supportive of starting from ground one and seeing if we might find somebody else. But I'm, I, I would like to reference that it did say in the ballot language, the Benzie, Leland County Health Department, so surprise...
May.
Aren't. It's, it's not a surprise.
Commissioner Wesson, question?
Actually, it's my understanding that the Health Department does not provide those services currently, per se, because do they not subcontract that work out to a different agency?
Some of them.
Or is the, is it the parenting communities that provides that service to the Health Department?
That's part of the Health Department.
Part of it? So parenting communities and the people who work for that organization historically get their paycheck from the Health Department?
No, some of them.
No?
No, no, the Health Department, um, the Leland Early Childhood Development Commission contracts...
Correct.
With the Health Department.
Correct.
For a less than quarter time of one of their employees. But the reason the committee placed, was recommending placing this in the Health Department is because this is very consistent with what the Health Departments across the country do in home visiting and where they want to continue in terms of child development and it filled the gaps that they did not have.
My question is, can the organization that currently provides the service to the Health Department, can that be replaced with a different organization?
I'm not sure I understand your question, ask again.
They're contracted organization, they're providing a service to the Health Department, is that not correct?
The, the organization is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization with an all-volunteer board who really was assisting the parenting communities as a fiduciary. They have no ability to really maintain a program like this, especially in an expanded division. And it's just as a, as an interim body.
And what's the name of that? 501(c)(3)?
The Leland Early Childhood Development Commission.
That's your, your board?
It's a board that I am on, yes. But the parenting communities program has been in existence for 20 years.
I'm aware of that.
So this is, this is from 2015, the LACDC picked up the fiduciary responsibilities. Before that, it was some combination of breasted funding coming from the federal and state government and other sources. So this was always, this was never intended for this body to be the administrative body of that particular program, you know, for as long as, only who knew what was going to happen with it down the road. So it was just an interim thing and only something we were happy to do.
Because you said they were, they ran out of money. That's what you had said earlier last day, but you said they ran out of money, you ran out of... I'm just helping her.
Just disregard the rules.
Private funds.
That's what we've been doing all day, huh?
So they ran out of money, so now this is the...
No.
The point that I'm trying to make is... The point that I'm trying to make is, the Health Department is not providing the service without the.
Just a small slice.
Okay, a small slice, okay.
And now.
Now wait, wait. Where do they get their money to provide the care, or that kind of care, in the community?
Medicaid.
Medicaid.
You're just helping, Commissioner Sotis Little.
No, hold on.
Yes.
Yeah. So, they're taking Medicaid dollars, right? Totally to pay for the program that.
Do you mean, oh, who, we're mixing programs here. The Health Department has one.
It's a little convoluted.
I know. The Health Department has one funded program that provides early childhood, early childhood services, and is only to a certain section of Medicaid patients, and it's only for the first year of life, and it's only ten visits. Is that answering your question?
Because these children, uh, have to meet the qualifications under the state funding?
The in- income qualifications.
Okay.
The family stuff.
With this millage in place, are those children still going to be served by Medicaid?
With the millage in place, the Health Department wanted to pick up from the second year on and fill that gap.
For those same children?
For those children, and expand it to other children.
Oh, we already know, it's not means tested, it means anybody. Whether we make a hundred thousand dollars a year or not, can access the services.
But yes, it would allow them to, because one year of service and ten visits does not go very far for children in need and families in need. So this would allow the Health Department to continue that service until they're up to age six, which is.
And then how does the Health Department, uh, provide the actual services?
Well, that, I think we have to wait to see the scope of.
No, I, I'm talking about currently. How do they?
They don't, they don't.
Okay.
That's the point.
How do they serve the kids who qualify under Medicaid?
For the one year of life?
Yes.
They have a social worker and other, I suppose, staff that is involved with this to a certain extent, depending on what is needed.
Well, then what do they need parenting communities for, or?
Because they can't serve all of the children, even that under Medicaid need it.
So they subcontracted to, to this other entity, right? Isn't that what you're saying? They subcontracted some of that work?
They're not paying us, we're paying them.
Okay.
In recognition.
Are you still gonna pay them?
No.
No, who's gonna pay you?
No one.
No one.
We're not a paid board, we're an all-volunteer board.
Who's gonna pay the person to do the work?
That depends on, uh, well. I can't speak for the Health Board, I feel like I'm getting in, in very waters where these decisions have not been discussed and made, at least not with.
Well, they've been discussed.
At least not with.
I'm trying to understand how this program currently works, how these changes, what these changes will do. I mean, obviously, this was mapped out, you know, and we.
Before you agree.
Struggle with this program that we never got information on, but that's beside the point, that's water under the bridge. So the point that I'm trying to make here is, that money comes into the county, correct?
For the millage.
For the millage.
For the millage.
Correct.
So this board here can then decide where that money is gonna go for that specific reason, correct?
Correct.
We have a choice to use the Health Department, we have a choice to use the agency that was currently working with that organization, or we have an opportunity to look at other organizations for a better profit, possibly.
You can do it yourself.
Exactly. Or do it ourselves.
Yes, one option you do have, and I, we have a couple of. That you do have the right to set up your own department.
Yes.
Yeah, you can do it.
Did you want to be in charge of that, Chet?
No, thank you.
Uh-huh.
But there are other organizations out there that maybe it would provide any, any number of these things. We've got people already in business in our county. We've got the Montessori schools that, this could fall right into what they do. Maybe even St. Mary's preschool, I don't know. I just think that we need to, as Deb said, look for the best thing for our buck on these dollars and on these services. We have scope services now to work with, um, so. That needs, I think we should discuss in, uh, January.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to move on to, to the next item, if we may.
Okay, good idea.
That be all right?
Good idea, good idea.
So, we have the administrators' evaluation. I'm still waiting, I'm hoping today to get the final few evaluations, and then I'll, I, then we can maybe have it, if we can just move this forward to next week. I shouldn't have the other ones today.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes seven zero. So that brings labor.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also sent a request to the administrator to get information about, uh, his counterparts across the region, and that that'd be useful as we review performance and compensation.
Yes, I think it's a reasonable question, yes.
What information are you asking for?
Salary and wages for county administrators across the region.
I would also request years of service in that position.
Okay, there was a survey done last spring, let me find it, I think it has years of service.
I think so too.
I think it does.
That'd be fine.
I don't want to spend a whole bunch of money doing it, but if it's available, I'd like.
No, I, I just have to, I gotta copy, I gotta find it.
Any other questions? Okay, so then that brings us to age, potential approval of labor contracts.
Yeah, I'd like to, as allowed by Michigan law, go into closed session to give nothing on negotiations for early grievance.
So we can have a motion to go into closed session for a moment.
All right.
Does that have to be a roll call?
Yes.
Fifteen minutes.
Commissioner Russell, was that you who?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ian Sorgy?
Yes.
Chairman Bunnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rittenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
Seven zero.
So is there a good chance that you will, when you come back into open session, you will just say, "Yeah, we're gonna approve these"?
Potential.
Okay.
Plenty who want to walk their dog on that.
Close, closed session. So vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go back into regular session. Motion pa- I'm, all opposed, sorry. Okay, motion passes seven zero. We'll go back into a regular session here.
Okay. I'd love to go into regular session.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we need to vote on it.
Yeah, you do.
All right.
All right, I'm pleased to inform you that we have a ton of agreement with the dispatchers, which is part of the new union, which is the Michigan Fraternity Order of Police Labor Council, and that's our dispatcher group. It's a two-year contract, with an annual interest of 2.5% per year. The dispatchers voted on this, I believe, Sunday, and passed it unanimously, is what I'm told. Uh, the terms, the language of contract is fairly the same as the past. Couple modifications, mostly just clarifications, I would say, in terms of shifts, and in terms of bereavement leave, for example. But in terms of actual pay and compensation, everything stays the same, with a 2.5% increase in 2020, and a 2.5% increase in 2021.
And a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
I regret saying that that way now.
We'll get to final, because it's just pending final legal review, because we have to draw up the contracts. Make sure both sides agree with that, but just allow us to go forward.
It was a phrase wrong.
On the second one, uh, the Michigan Fraternity Order of Police Labor Council with the corrections officers, we did come to a ton of agreement. However, unfortunately, the officers chose not to approve that contract, and therefore, we're not going forward with recognition at times because they chose not to ratify the proposed terms of the contract.
You want us to move this forward next week or not?
No, unless, well, if they vote, we'll let you know, we can always add it.
We can always add it on the list. All right. Thank you. So then that brings us then to a review of financials.
I did notice we fed our jurors very well. Schumaski Bakery. I did have a question, and there was a, a bill in here, okay, on, in Claims and Accounts, page one, two weld casters on a cart. But we had done a lot of that last month, so did they get another? I didn't see a cart, I did see the welding, so is this just the welding bill that made it? A second welding bill, or did the bill come in late? But we had.
I'll have to, we'll have to ask Jerry about it. It states that this work was done on November 5th. And the previous one, I believe, was asked in November, was October. So we can find out, um, what the, what more detail was on the cart.
Okay, yeah, did he need a second, did he get a second, I didn't see a second cart, but if you can figure all that out for us.
Okay.
I know he did modify a cart, I don't know if that's related to that or not, but that could be, but we'll, we'll get back to it.
Was that in regards to the construction work that was going on here, where they had to use carts to move?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Some of the offices.
He and his staff were very helpful in helping everybody move their desk, pretty sure. And he got a cart that actually has a lift on it, that was, saved a lot of time and effort.
Any other questions?
What is DC brochure?
That is, oh, Hanson's is now.
Okay. So it was, it was bought in county then?
Yes.
Whatever it was.
Yes.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Then that, we move on to special reports. Commissioner Sotis Little.
Yes, there was a question, uh, last meeting about why the, uh, laundromat in the Grand Traverse area wasn't involved. And I did pose that with Sharon Vealand, and she not only gave me a great answer, she gave a historical answer. So I will share that with Chet, and she can circulate that to all of you. But basically, there's a good reason.
Okay. Any other reports, seeing none? Bring us the public comment, please.
I'm all wire, Cleveland.
Just really briefly, I'm glad to know that you guys are being careful with the millage money that we all voted for. And I encourage you to utilize this money that, to support the voter's voice. And let's use this money, let's improve the lives of our children, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, become the commissioner's comments? Commissioner Sotis Little.
Just one. I, I know that it's easy to kind of forget, um, the involvement of volunteers and a particular group, and the voice that they had. Our Early Childhood County Committee really actually represented not only the county, but regional organizations. There were eleven different governmental groups that were involved, state and some federal there, and local. And, um, St. Mary's was on, on that particular group. Just about any organization who had capacity in early childhood, interest in early childhood, grandparents, parents, business owners, churches, libraries, et cetera, et cetera. And the bottom line is, they unanimously recommended the recommendation that came forward, the first two. And I think that often gets lost in the shuffle of all, all of this that has transpired since. So, I just wanted to toss that out, and also, I thank you again to those people who gave an incredible amount of their time and energy to come up with very thoughtful, well-researched, um, recommendations.
Can I just, I just have one comment then about the, uh, the legitimate voters, they want to plant a tree, and we need to talk about that at some point, put it on the agenda?
Next year.
Yeah, next year?
From January?
Yeah. That be all right? Okay, that was my comment. Anything else, anyone else?
Is it Japanese knotweed that they want to put on?
Probably.
I think we should be a little discerning when it comes to what kind of trees we allow to be planted.
We have a policy of parks based on that, exactly.
Yeah.
Right, I think, you know, we'll have to look, because we don't have a policy about it, so.
Right.
I mean, I have room for all the towers that, plaster all over the.
Any other commissioner comments?
They were gonna make the tower look like a tree. Maybe they'll do that.
There are, it was, we built, they had a tower that looked like a pine tree.
It didn't fool anybody.
Gorgeous.
We, we have to move on to.
It's beautiful.
Financials, here. Please.
I would recommend approval of Claims and Accounts, one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and forty, eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Post audit?
Recommend approval of post audit, two million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned.
Five minutes?
Three minutes?